... meeting will now come to order, put on a roll call.
John Hutzco.
Michael O'Brien.
Laurie G.
John Cutler.
Craig Smith.
Jason Perry.
And if everyone would join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Well, Happy New Year, everyone.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We have a couple of upcoming meeting dates, one on February 3rd and one on February 17th. And I know we have one member absent tonight. We actually have an opening on the board, so Jeannie, do you have a...
Thank you.
Excellent. All right, let's go with left hand. And we'll seat an alternate member for our...
Survey, Steve.
It's like the Academy Awards.
Steve.
All right, it's Steve, if you'd join us up here.
Thank you.
Okay, and we have several sets of minutes to approve. Let's see, I've got through, it looks like I've got September 16th here. I've got September 16th and the October 7th information. Do I have a motion to approve the September 16th minute?
So moved, second.
All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, second, thank you, all in favor, aye. Any one abstain, anyone not here on the 16th? Okay, and then our minutes of October 7th, do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the 7th?
So moved, second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
And Jason and I will abstain because we were not there at that meeting. Okay, we'll roll over the rest of the, I don't have the attendees for the rest of the minutes, so we'll handle the rest over the following meeting. All right, the first item on our agenda tonight is a discussion for the final approval for Jackson Corners Phase 2, six lots on Towns and Roads. Okay. Do we have our laptop up? Is our laptop up?
No. Jackson Corners Phase 2 subdivision, we were in front of the board last month for an extension of preliminary approval and also permission to go ahead and start roughing in the town road that's going in, and Central Water that's being extended from the Shenandoah Water District. I don't know if how many board members are familiar with the project, but this project's been rolling around since about 2007. This project was initially six lots, and then we phased it into two phases. Lot number six was carved off and has currently been built on. And this part of the application we're going for tonight is Phase 2, which incorporates five lots and the establishment of a town road. The town road's about 250 feet long. It supports the five homes being proposed. I know the biggest issue we had this whole process was the Board of Health and due to the fact that some of its material was coming off the site. And we had to get the site to a final proposed grade during negotiations with the Health Department. We've gone ahead and had survey out there. We are at the proposed grade, which we anticipated. Our Board of Health application was revised and we sent it up to the Health Department for review, I want to say just after Thanksgiving. So it's been in the queue with the department for a while. The Central Water aspect of this project was approved originally during Phase 1 with the DEC through an extensive review. So basically, Board of Health has concurred with the Central Water aspect of it as far as pressures, capacities, and whatnot. It's mainly now just going through the process of getting the individual septics approved. Again, we're standing gravel out on site, so they're relatively small systems, but again, the biggest aspect and the biggest holdup with this project has been the fact that some material had to come off site. So as far as a technical review goes with the Health Department, it should be pretty straightforward. Again, we just, we have some bigger projects in town that kind of get the precedent as far as review goes. But again, we did submit this after Thanksgiving, so we do anticipate an approval relatively soon. Another aspect of this project is we did go ahead and we did some of the easement generation with more associates, we did a couple rounds with them. We just have to coordinate with the applicant's attorney, Mr. Wood. We sent those documents out. And then just kind of going through some of the line items that more associates springs up, there's a new FEMA floodplain survey that came out in 2012. We went ahead and overlaid that on our site plan. I think the original survey...
Did it change anything?
Excuse me?
Did it change anything, or are you still well above the...
The new mapping did show the line kick up a little bit as far as grade goes, but as it affects our site, we come close to it, but we don't encroach into it.
Okay, and Joe, is this the 297 BFE that we were looking at in your letter?
Right, yeah. Brian and I talked about that a little bit, and even with it being higher, it doesn't affect their lots or their grading or the road or anything.
Okay. All right, so you're just going to reflect the updated lines and the...
Yeah, that updated line is shown on the plan. I think Joe just brought it up in his letter, just as an FYI to the board, that things have changed, it's been noted on the plan, and it still has no effect on the overall development.
Okay.
Other than that, I think it's just a couple of detailed line items as far as attorneys, establishing drainage language and easements, covenants, restrictions, that kind of attorney stuff. Fees, inspection fees, I did verify that we still have DEC coverage for our construction activity permit. I sent an email to Joe on that this afternoon. Other than that, I think we're in the home stretch here. We have an applicant that is very excited to file this map. We have two very interested clients for lots number one and two, so we would like to wrap this up.
Okay. Joe, I know we had talked a little bit about whether or not we needed to update the NAG deck with any additional information. You reviewed that NAG deck, we don't need to change it, or we have, we'll have an updated NAG deck next time?
From what I recall, I think it's satisfactory for, even though they split it into two phases, I think everything was already accounted for in there, but I can maybe take one more look at that.
Okay. So Brian, it sounds like there's still a few things that with final approval we'll need to condition for. Is there anything else that was a preliminary condition that hasn't been addressed yet that we haven't covered?
From my recollection, I think we are, we have addressed the issues. I don't think there's anything outstanding after that comes to mind.
Okay. Any questions or comments from board members?
Nope.
Okay, Brendan, anything on your end for this one?
No comments.
Michelle? Joe?
I mentioned this to Brian, too. Recently with subdivision applications, it seems, well, the way it's shown now, the street trees are inside the right-of-way, except for maybe one by the snow easement and the hydrant, which is just outside the right-of-way. I think the preference has been to go towards putting them just on the outside of the right-of-way for future consideration with the town maybe not needing to maintain the trees if they're not on town property and...
That's an easy change, if the board would like it like that, it's something we can entertain.
And then, I mean, Brian had mentioned fees and the agreements, and there's the performance bond. I know the first part of the project had some bonding associated with it. We'll probably have to see if that, you know, we'll have to look at those bonds that are in place now and, but do a bond for the road work, and since part of the work's been done already, we might have to take into account some other work that's happened, or we can...
Can we have that ready for our next, our next meeting, if we have this on for decision on the 3rd? We can have looked at the bond, and if the bond needs to change, we can...
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Understood.
Okay. Anything else, Joe, from Morris?
No, that's it.
Scott, anything from your end?
No, nothing to add.
Okay. So Brian, what we'll do is we'll put this on for decision at our next meeting. Great.
That's February 3rd?
February 3rd.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda tonight is a discussion for Lehigh lawns and landscaping amended site plan on Sprout Creek Court.
Good evening, Dennis Lynch with Engineering. We're here discussing the site plan for...
I'm just going to have you, I'm sorry, come over to the mic for us so we can pick you up for the... Thank you.
Good evening, Dennis Lynch with Engineering. We're here to discuss the Lehigh, amended site plan for the Lehigh Landscaping. The project was originally granted approval in April of this year. We're here to discuss some amendments to the project. There is a hoop house, which is a temporary structure approximately 20, 15 by 40 feet wide, which is located right here in the back of the building.
Do you have something we can put up on screen for?
I do.
Oh, okay. The laptop, Jeannie, or the file itself is open?
The file should be open. Can you just leave it to the folks, please?
Bear with us for a moment, please.
This is 376 and Sprout Creek Court. This is the existing building that's located here, and then the improvements that were a part of the original sub, or I'm sorry, original site plan approval. The amended site plan, we'll be adding the hoop house here, which is a approximately 15 by 40-foot structure. It's a semi-circular, circular, steel-framed tent, if you will, with a plastic wrap around it, which will store plants. We're proposing this 30 by 30-foot paved area with fueling, three fueling tanks that are there, each approximately 300 gallons, and then two storage bins located over here, which are approximately 20 by 20. Also, we'll be proposing a liquid propane storage area where you bring and change your empty propane tanks for your full propane tanks. They'll be approximately 30, 36.
Like a cage setup?
Correct. There'll be no, no storage on site of the liquid propane.
No killing of the tanks, so?
No, no.
The hoop house, I'm sorry, did you say that was seasonal, or is that intended to be a permanent structure?
It's, it's a temporary structure, meaning that there's no footings or foundation to it. It would be probably as an as-needed basis, but it would be to store flowers. It's approximately, probably six and a half feet tall. There's an existing fence that goes along the property here that would, would hide it from the, from Sprout Creek.
Is that a solid fence, or is that...
Yes, it's a solid PVC fence.
Weren't the visibility concerns really more towards the rail trail as well? I mean, it's one thing to see it as a road, but I thought that was the issue, at least from the, the letter we got from the county. Did you guys get a copy of that?
I will double check, I don't know if we got a copy of it or not. The way this is situated, the rail trail is approximately here. There is a significant grade change, so you will be able to see this portion of the site from, from the rail trail.
Okay.
There was originally, as part of the site plan approval, there was a significant amount of screening of plants that were planted in here. Over time, obviously, those will grow and provide some kind of screening from, from the yard.
So all the, all the landscape plantings have been installed?
Yes.
By the way, I think the new color actually looks a lot better. Site looks good.
Let's, let's start with the fuel tanks. I don't think I have any issue with the LP tanks unless anybody else has issue with the LP tanks. I have concern about the diesel, it looks like it's about 1,000 gallons of fuel, 300-gallon diesel, 300 off-road diesel, 400 gallon gasoline tank. Are these tanks actually, is that the size of the tanks, or is that how much they're being filled in their larger tanks?
That's the, the size of the actual tank. They're not larger tanks, that's the maximum volume of the tank.
Okay. And is there, I'm not familiar enough with how they would be used in this setting. Is there some sort of requirement for containment in the event one of them starts to leak? I'm assuming they're above ground, sitting on pavement?
They are, yes. There, there is, basically, there is a containment system that's in, it's a temporary structure that goes around the tanks that would prevent from any kind of spilling or leaking from that, that tank.
Okay. Is there permitting required for these, or do you register them somewhere?
No, they're, they're below the threshold for the, the amount of bulk storage.
Okay. Scott, do we know if the town has any, and I know Tom wasn't able to be here tonight due to illness, but do we know, does the town have any requirements, or are there any regulations that we need to follow when we have fuel tanks stored on a site like this?
I think we follow the DEC regs, I'll double check that, but I know Michelle was going to look into what the...
It's my understanding that you're still required to register the tanks with the New York State DEC, even though you might have to, have to actually get a bulk storage permit? You still just need to register?
It's above that, it's above that.
That's for the permit, it's above. I believe all the tanks need to be registered, so the things that are there.
Isn't this covered under like an agricultural thing? I mean, I used to work on a farm and there was one of these.
I'm not aware, exemption, it's possible that there could be, but I'm not aware of one.
It wouldn't apply in this case, anyway. This is commercial, not agricultural.
And then, my other question is, I don't know that, that you can answer this, I do have, I do have this into my hazmat, but I just haven't gotten an answer back, is if the liquid petroleum storage counts towards the, the total amount of storage?
On other projects that it hasn't been counted, but we will...
We could verify that, that'd be great.
So again, your three tanks.
So Michelle, we have 1,000 gallons worth of tank storage here. We have vehicles on site that would theoretically have tanks with fuel in them. Do, is it the net of what's stored on site, or is it just the net of what's in these tanks?
It's, it's supposed to be what's stored on site.
So if there's a vehicle on the site, is that considered part of the storage, or is that exemption?
I don't believe the vehicle's part, part of the storage, unless it's got a separate, you know, like storage tank that's with it.
Okay. Okay. So with 1,000 gallons, that's below the DEC requirement for...
The DEC requirement is 1,100.
Yes.
Is 1,100?
For a permit. But my understanding is that they would still have to register. That's my understanding, and I, again...
The building, the heat system is, is natural gas, or natural gas?
Botini's done it for me for years, and there's no registration. I've been with this with them, and run them all, run them all business, five different accounts. The Botini's tanks.
So maybe Botini's already registered them.
Yeah.
It's probably, yeah, it's probably they have them registered. I'm not familiar enough with these tanks, do they have serial numbers on them or something?
Well, typically, they do that because if there's a spill, then they go out and they get the registration number off the tank, and they know what, who to, who to blame for the cleanup, because ultimately, sometimes the, the tanks spill underground sometimes when people aren't aware that they're spilling, and they know who to go back to for...
Right. Well, but in this case, I don't think we have that concern, as long as there's an adequate containment system underneath the tanks. I'm assuming the tanks are in good condition?
Yes.
You would pay attention if they were not in good condition and have them swap them out or something like that? All right, and I'm sorry, will you just show, show me where the tanks are again, one more, I apologize, I know you circled them when you were talking, but...
They're in this, this area here.
And so is that, what's directly across the street there, then?
Field set, open lot.
Over here.
It's another lot that I'm in the process of trying to purchase.
Okay.
I believe these two lots are vacant.
So we're not next to residences or anything like that that are overlooking?
No, no.
Okay, and the hoop house is on the other side?
Right next door.
Or right next to it, okay. And you said it's a six and a half foot tall?
Approximately, it's, it's not very tall.
Is that the peak of the hoop, or just the peak of the, like, straight wall?
Yes. No, it's the peak of the hoop.
Okay. And how tall is the fence that's surrounding it?
Six feet.
Six feet, all right, so it's not...
No, if you, if you drive past, you can barely see the top of it.
Maybe just see the top of it.
Which the top, which, the fence is white, and the plastic on the hoop tent is also white.
Okay. Is there anything else about this site plan that's different than what we originally talked about or originally approved? Anything else we need to be talking about right now?
Just the hoop house, the fueling area here, and this, these two storage bins, and then the propane storage.
And what are the storage bins for? Is that just additional landscape?
Yeah, it would be for gravel, or item four.
I thought we had storage for that on the, on the top side of the...
There's, there's storage along this...
Right.
... of property, but then there's additional storage on this apartment.
How is that accessed? I'm not seeing roadway up to that. Is there gravel there, or what's the access to that?
This, this is the gravel parking lot. There is access to get here.
Is that grass, or is that...
It's grass.
You guys cut it a couple times a year, I mean, it seems like it's, it's not open field, it's not tall grass, it's...
Yeah, but it's not paved, so if we're bringing heavy equipment in, is it gouging out after a rainfall, or, I mean, normally, we'd want to have a paved surface or gravel surface that comes up to something like that if it's going to be loaded.
You're saying there's grass behind the fence?
In front of the fence, there is. The whole place is gravel, bank road gravel.
I thought we just said in front of the two storage bins that are not currently approved, that they're sitting on grass, and that there's grass in front of them.
There's grass on the, on the outside of the fence, not on the inside of the fence.
Okay, what's between the storage and where I can see the limits of the gravel? What, what's between those two?
Just gravel, just gravel.
Michelle, did you, did you have a chance to go out? I knew you were going to take a look at some of these for us, is it, can you just give us your, your notes?
Sure. First, I just wanted to say that, just for processing purposes, that there are some variances that the applicant is requesting, because basically, they're seeking area variances to allow the structures that they're proposing in the 100-yard, 100-foot front yard setback.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch it, what is it?
They need variances, because they're not allowed to put structures in the 100-yard front yard setback.
Which structures are in there?
Pretty much everything that they're proposing, the storage tanks, the hoop house, the new storage bins, the refuse container.
So we're treating, we're not treating 376 as the front?
Yeah, I mean...
Corner lot, you got two fronts.
You got, yeah, basically, and, and last time, if you remember, we had an issue with the outdoor, outdoor display. So, and the applicant disclosed this on their actual application, that they would be seeking these variances.
Okay.
And then also, they, they are having, they're slightly above the 30% lot coverage, so they're seeking a variance for the total lot coverage on the site.
The, I have one question about that. The current bulk regs for the area, I believe we found online, was 65%?
So, okay, so I had 35% in here, but maybe they, can I see the...
I don't know if that was a previous...
Let me see if it's the newest one, I can tell you. This is the newest one. So you should be good.
So we're okay, we don't need...
Yeah, this is, they were referencing the old one.
I mean, with the parking lot mostly gravel, I would think that's, that's pervious, not covered, so...
Actually, though, when it gets compacted, it's not, it's impervious. So, you and I were just talking about maybe having a look at how much of that changed from the per land originally. I don't know if you have more than an acre that was disturbed in total. We might have to take a look at those.
I don't believe there was, it was over an acre. The only thing that's going to be changing as, as far as pervious, additional pervious surface would be the 30 by 30 area in front of the fueling tanks.
That'd be impervious.
The whole area now is gravel, bank road, compacted gravel. What is the total lot size? Can you refresh my memory?
Two acres.
Two acres.
Two acres?
It is almost the back half.
Close.
What about where the septic is? Is that, is that gravel now as well?
Yeah. It's, it's original gravel, bank road gravel.
So Scott, are you saying that once, when it's used like this, it has to be treated as impervious?
Well, once you run equipment over to gravel compacted, it's basically the same as impervious, and you may have slightly different perv, slightly, but pro intensive purpose, if it's not grass anymore.
I know Dennis had done a stormwater report, and we could see what, what the assumptions were back then. But they also had proposed two drywells, so it's stored to fuel and any other, you know, chemicals. We had to maybe look at how, how that could find its way into those drywells. Or hopefully prevent that from happening, I should say.
Is there any way to relocate these things to meet the setback, or do you have to...
The setback requirement is 100 feet, which is, I believe, all of the property.
It's actually, I think the building's actually in the setback, too, a little bit.
This, the exist, the...
It was already in existing condition.
Building to be grandfathered.
Yeah, you know, I know.
The existing building was in, I believe it's approximately 80, 84 feet, so would put it back in, on the other side of the prop. Just, the, even though they're temporary structures, would they be considered, I mean, there's no, no footing, no foundation, would that be considered a structure that we'd have to go get a variance for?
It is technically a structure under the, the definition of the law.
Yeah, there's, there's a definition within our code that we use examples like fountains and things like that, so these would, these would definitely qualify as that.
And I, I believe the first time around, we had, we had pushed the, the storage bins out of, I think they had originally showed storage bins on either side, and we had pushed them on the other side to keep them out of the setback, but having said that, I don't think there's much area on the site to change what's going on.
And this is an industrial zone?
Yes.
I-2?
I-3.
I-3.
I mean, it is kind of, you know, I, I think this lot has improved dramatically of the applicant's ownership. I mean, it really was kind of a hole before, particularly in the back, when it was the floors and walls. And, you know, I think there's been a lot of improvements there. I think particularly out front with the landscaping and, so...
One additional thing that's not shown on the plans that we'd like to request is, in this area, to provide an area for seasonal displays. During the autumn season, there was a tractor that was out there that had some displays, and we're just looking, since it has been removed, but we'd be looking for permission to use that area as a seasonal display area.
Hay bales or flowers or something like that?
Yeah, nothing, it would be either hay bales, or the tractor, or, or something along those lines.
Okay. That's going to need to, I'm assuming it's going to need the same kind of variance, though, because it's, it's going to be within the setback.
And I just, just to refresh my memory, I think one of the original issues, and I'm not saying that you have to, I'm just telling you when you originally looked at it, there was an outdoor display, and we had a bunch of conversation about whether or not that technically, because that was right around the same time that they had just approved what a structure was, and, and we were considering where that could go and where to place it on the site.
But are we sure this isn't agricultural? Because I, I used to work at a tree nursery, and it was sound agricultural.
But I don't think nursery is the use here.
No.
Or landscaping.
Whatever. And then the final thing is that, that we did talk during the previous round of the site plan about putting some screening in along the back of the building, and I know there were some existing trees there, and there's, there is no, no screening to screen, I'm sorry, not in back of the building, the, the back of the storage bins. There's an existing tree line there, but it's mainly deciduous trees, and you can see through the activity that's happening. And actually, subsequent to that, we did get comments from the Dutchess County rail trail, or Dutchess County, about the rail trail and the, the visibility of it, because there's a lot of action and activity happening back there. And so there was originally shown a, a line of evergreen trees, and I know that there was stuff planted near the building, which was asked for, but there was also trees shown behind the storage bins.
This was the landscaping that was added here. Originally, there was more landscaping that was along in this area, but it was in the, an area that had existing trees that were there, and I think it was, if I was wrong, that there was, it was at the discretion of...
Well, it was, it was at the discretion of the town, once it was constructed, to go back and look and see if, if it was visible, because we were... Because we were told that it was likely not to be visible, that there was enough screening there. And I don't, I don't believe, I think it's visible still, is what I'm saying.
Can I just ask one question?
Not much, though.
My understanding is where that landscaping was potentially going to go, that, I mean, the last time I was there, it was being used for additional storage. Is that still the case or is all that stuff from behind the bins being removed?
No, there's some stuff there. Like I said, I'm trying to purchase a lot of process street. I'm in contract to do it because I need more space here. So-
So if nothing else, planting trees of some sort would prohibit storage from being done behind the bins, which is not shown on the site plan.
Right. And I just think it would prevent people from, I mean, it wasn't a huge amount of trees. It was just a line of evergreens. And I think it would prevent, at least give you some buffer from the activity and the noise and the everything else that's going back.
Really?
Just remember that the feeder system, all the roots, all the roots on all the deciduous trees, I'll hit those when I go to plant the new trees. So whatever I'm going to make, add more trees, I'm going to damage existing trees. So it's up to you. I'm a licensed arborist, so whatever you guys want to do.
Michelle, I think we'll, now we're in, you know, we're in winter, so we can see what the visibility is, evergreens there versus the whatever cover is left from the deciduous trees. If you want to, if you want to take a look at it, I mean, the applicant's going to have to go and talk to the ZBA anyway, so there's a little bit of time for us to take a look at that.
And I certainly don't want to take out any existing vegetation to plant trees, but I think we can screen a little bit more, maybe in some of the spaces.
Okay. Maybe if we just had some pictures, we can look at it and kind of-
And I think then the only other issue I had was just if the, just the refuse container, I think, was moved. I'm not sure exactly where it was originally. It was farther back on the site, if I remember correctly.
The refuse enclosure is currently here. Originally, it was backed over in this area.
So just to be aware that it was-
The refuse enclosure is-
Just the refuse container itself.
It was originally in the back of the site and it's been moved forward.
Okay.
So that, then it has to be redrawn? Is that what you're saying, Michelle?
Um, no, they put it in, I guess, the location it's currently in now?
Show us where it currently is and where it was originally s-
This is the current location and it was-
All right, so it's next to one of the two 20 by 20 temporary?
Correct.
Okay. The front yard. In the- Front yard, but this is an industrial zone.
Right, no, I'm just saying-
So it's still in the setback. So you're going to, again, when you go to the ZBA, anything you're trying to place in that setback, you're going to need to talk to the ZBA about. Okay. This is, this, when you were originally in front of us, we didn't hear that you had the need for the fuel storage and some of these other things. So I guess, did something specific change here or is it just the business is growing or what would-
Business is growing. I've always had fuel tanks. We never talked about it. I never thought about it.
Okay. Is there any other materials on site that we need to talk about with landscaping? Is there any, no fertilizer, pesticides, anything like that?
No, I think that, I think that was already covered at the beginning.
Already covered at the beginning, meaning we do have that stored here on this site and it's part of your site plan?
Anything that was stored on site, is that stored on site now was, or approved as part of the original site plan approval?
Okay. And it's all indoors? Is any of it outdoors? Okay. Planning board can't do anything right now because what's being proposed here obviously requires you to go to the ZBA. So I think we can refer you there as a next step.
Okay.
And depending what happens with the ZBA, you know, you can come back to us either with your variances in place and we can look at this. Is there anything else? Any other comment from board members?
I think I'd like to echo what Michael said, that the place looks infinitely better than fifty-four. And anything that they, and I've seen the displays in front and they're very tasteful, very nicely done. So even though he may be doing some things that need to be approved, this is a case of where he does stuff that is over and above what you normally expect somebody to do.
And I'm sorry, I was laughing because I was going to say, starting with getting that tree off the roof. Huge, huge impact.
Other questions or comments?
No.
Brendan or Joe?
I just have one question. I remember, if my memory is sort of right, the, you know, the access through the back of the site is intended to be a public access also. People would go back there and buy materials and-
This access?
Yeah.
No, it would just be just for employee-
Just for employees.
Yeah.
The only, the only thing, my only comment is that you should probably redraw the plan such that it reflects the access and the coverage that you actually have. Because, I mean, you don't, like Laurie had mentioned, there's no, you're not showing the access to the refuse, you're not showing the access to these other bins or even the fuel pumps for that matter. So it should just be redrawn to make it look like you're intending, look like you're using it. And, you know, if those parking areas are not there or they're in different places now, it should just be drawn to be correct. Because right now, it looks like you just have a bunch of development, you know, in a grass area, not, you know, not accessed or gravel coverage and all that other stuff.
Michelle, anything else?
No.
Joe?
No.
Scott?
Yeah, the only thing, I just want to check with Dennis Miller as far as the cul-de-sac. I know where they tied in that entrance. I know the paving contractor wanted to make a few changes that he felt would work, and I think it works pounding out there. So I just want Dennis to make sure he's good with the house.
Okay. We'll refer the applicant to the ZBA. We can do that in the meantime?
Do that in the meantime, absolutely.
Do you think the applicant has any, I mean, what do you think is causing that?
Well, I mean, asphalt's not pitched properly or of some sort. I remember the paving contractor asking for some relief that he could make it work on a little bit swirping away he thought it would work. So I just want Dennis to go work at it.
Okay.
Okay. So we'll see you again after you've been to the ZBA. And this is your official referral there. Jeanie, if you need, you know, just reflect in a minute, it's a formal referral of the planning board over to the ZBA.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. All right. The next item on our agenda is a discussion for the Beekman Country Club amended site plan on Country Club Road.
My name's Philip Schatz. I'm president of the company and have been for 50 years. And first, I'd like to thank this board. When we had the problem with the driving range, I'll remind you that our driving range used to be along Beekman Road. And when we built it, it was safe. And then the balls got better, the clubs got better, we raised the fence 25 feet. And we still had balls going over. And we got to a point where I would wake up at night and say, my God, if a ball hit a windshield and the car swerved and hit a school bus, just wasn't worth it. So you all worked with us. We now have a wonderful driving range, which is safe and better. The golf course is better, and we thank you for that. We, I'm here for two reasons. One is that we have put a tent up for our larger outings. We put it up, take it down three times a year. Costs a fortune. And I'm here to ask you to let us say we'll put it up on April 1st and take it down on November 1st of each year.
Okay.
It's, it would be a blessing for us. And there are also one or two outings where we're very tightly crowded in the clubhouse. So we'd probably move them down to the location at the tent. The tent would be exactly where it's always been for the past 30 years. And so I guess, I don't know, I talked to Scott Bryan about this and I said, you know, we're doing what we did. He said, no, come to the planning board. And here I am.
Okay. Before we go any further, do we, Kate, do we have the picture for this to put up on the-
I have one here.
I've got a couple copies back here, too.
I think we have the smaller version, so I think we're okay with that. I just want to see if we can get it up on the board so that members of the public are able to view it as well. So the white, the white box with the X is where you'd like to place the tent for roughly six months out of the year?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Laurie, is there any more of those?
Um, I can send one down. It should have been in our packages.
I think they were sent home.
Yeah.
And not the ones you got tonight there.
Oh, okay.
That's where it was. Could be yours.
So my first question is, it's in your parking lot. About how many parking spaces does it consume when it's sitting?
I told you, let me read, I think it's- Takes up 22 parking spaces, leaving 184 parking spaces available. And we have never had a problem with parking. We've never been on the town roads. We've never had any issues with that. And it's, we actually built more than we originally planned back 20 odd years ago.
And there was no way to position it up on the grass so that you wouldn't lose parking?
Ma'am, the trouble is that sometimes these outings happen on a rainy day. And if we put it on grass, it becomes a disaster. People are in mud.
Oh, so there's no flooring on this tent?
Oh, no, no. It's strictly, this is a temporary thing, which would be a blessing for us to be able to not have to spend and put up and take down. And I hope that you all say it's the minimalist change and-
I have to admit, I haven't seen it. Is this a tent that is a solid tent? Does it have like the window, the plastic window kind of panels?
No, 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 no. It's a tent and we have plastic sides you can drop if it's raining, but-
But otherwise it's open?
It's, how would you describe it? You put up a metal frame and stretch the canvas over it. It's a-
So it's a roof with sides if you want to attach them?
I'm sorry, ma'am.
It's the roof of the tent, but you can put the sides on it if you want to attach them?
Yeah, there are roll-up sides that you can drop down or roll up.
So it's a canopy tent?
Okay.
It's a party tent.
It's a, yeah.
But it's 6,000 square feet. It's 60 by 100 feet.
Well, it's the same one, the same size as been put up. It's a big tent, yes.
Yeah. It's like the one they put at Lime Kiln, right? Lime Kiln, the recreation center.
It's bigger.
Yeah.
That's roughly the same size?
No, it's 6,000. Laurie, looking at the aerial photograph, is there any opportunity to move it, if I get my direction right, to the, to the- I don't know if it's to the west?
Well, I mean-
Where there's parking, there's like an open area next to the building?
I thought the whole thing was, I mean, if you put this up over grass, it's going to kill the grass, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then you just get sloped.
I guess we picked the spot where we'd always had it. The problem is, if you look at the photograph, you can see our maintenance building. We have a chemical storage building, which is safe and, you know, it's a, it's next to, we don't really think we'd like to have a tent next to that. We, and also, our traffic coming through from the maintenance building onto this area comes down through there, bypasses the berm. But I really hope that you can give us permission for this because it would mean a lot to us.
There's a worn up path there and they would go in and out. So that tent would block it potentially if you slid it over.
Can you describe what your biggest event is with the most amount of-
New York State Troopers outing, without question.
Okay. And then during that event, where do, where do folks park? Do you have overflow parking outside of the parking lot?
If we, when we have overflow parking, we pull it right up on where the old driving range was.
Okay, so you park on the grass?
Yeah.
Now, is that where, wait a minute, is that where the new foot golf is going, where the old-
Even if the foot golf is there, it's just grass. In other words, where it's not going to be any destruction of the present-
So during the troopers event, you wouldn't have foot golf going on at the same time?
That's correct, yeah.
Excuse me. I don't know if you'd know, the 6,000 square foot tent, like how many, roughly how many people would that occupy in the tent itself?
Let me think. 300 people.
300, yeah, okay.
I mean, when we have the outing, we can accommodate 240 golfers. And then there are always-
Spectators.
Well, like, when the state troopers come, I'm always the chauffeur for the chaplain. He comes and some of the bosses come and it's, it's a nice party, but-
So you have to at least have enough parking for those 240 to 300 people then?
Yeah. And if we have to, the troopers come usually grouped in a car. I mean, we've never had a parking problem.
But you would still intend to use the driving range as, the old driving range as your overflow parking if you needed to?
Absolutely, yeah. I would, I will answer to you that before we built, a huge addition to the parking. We did have a problem with parking and I remember Pete Idina said, and he thought this is unacceptable. And I said to him, Pete, I'll promise you, you'll never see a customer of ours parking on a town road. And that's how, 30 years ago, 25 years ago, it never happened. We, I mean, the great relationship we've had with the town is because we tried to be good neighbors and bring business to the town and have something that's pretty and beneficial to the town.
With the tent in place, how many, how many parking sites do you have, spots do you have?
184 or 180.
184 with the tent up, so covering some of the spots?
That's after the tent.
That's after the tent's up?
Leaving 184 spaces available after the tent's up.
Okay.
You'd never hold two events at the same time, like a big event in the clubhouse at the same time you had the tent?
We've only got 27 holes.
Okay.
I mean, there's just so many golfers I can put on the course.
Okay.
With the, with the tent being up longer, you said right now you have typically about three events a year. Do you anticipate having more events? Is that part of what this does or?
No, but I would sure move a couple of our outings where we're prouder than the clubhouse down to the tent so that we could have less pressure and it gets awfully tight up there. And that I would almost, I mean, I'd have to say yes, at least two or three more would go down to the tent.
Would there be any other use for the tent when you don't have an outing going on? Is there anything else you plan to put there or anything?
We might, I mean, we might have parties there if people wanted them. Yeah, I mean, if somebody wanted to-
Something like that?
I'm sorry, ma'am.
Picnic tables or something like that underneath or regular tables?
Well, what we, we would then buy our own table and chairs so that we wouldn't have to rent those also.
Okay.
And yes, we might use it for other uses, but only proper uses.
Okay. Michelle, as far as the parking goes, I don't know. We haven't talked about foot golf yet, which we'll get to in just a minute. But assuming that the grass area can be the overflow parking in this situation, it seems like, I get that we don't want to put a tent on grass if there's bad weather or something like that. Is there anything else that you're concerned about or Brendan with the traffic flow, if this is sitting on pavement?
Well, I think, I mean, it's sort of an existing condition because this is currently how they utilize the site during the three times of the year that they have the tent up.
So the three times a year is different than seven months of the year?
Right, right. So the question is, is whether or not there's additional capacity at the golf course as a result of what they're doing. And there are going to be additional people showing up regularly. And one of the ways, I mean, it's possible that you could, if you were so inclined, limit that by saying if you were using the tent facility or at the larger events, that you could not do foot golf at the same time or, or something to that effect so that you-
We would not affect, I mean, nothing worse. We have to satisfy our customers and you can't have customers with no place to park. And I gave my word, we'd never have customers on town roads and we won't.
So just answering your question, like I said, it's an existing condition. So the only issue is what is the increment change between what's happening and whether or not you've got a lot more events where you've got, you know, more parking needs and you have to park in a different location. And he's saying that he can accommodate that on the, the driving range.
Former driving range?
Yeah, former driving range. And how many spaces can you, how many cars can you park in that former driving range or how many do you usually park there?
I could park 500 cars on there, you know, and that's literally on the- Of course.
Foot golf won't affect that. You'll still have all that excess parking out on your foot golf area.
Well, if that's Scott, it would be through the building.
Scott, do they need a permit to put this tent up?
I'm sorry.
I'm asking Scott a question.
I'm sorry.
Do they need a permit to put this tent up?
I don't know what the threshold, you know, in terms of duration.
I can understand for one event or two events, but now we're going to leave it up for seven months or whatever it is.
Yeah. No, it's an interesting question. I'll look into it. I don't have that answer.
Well, and the other question-
It's a structure, but it's not an annual. You're taking it down seasonally, so.
It depends on whether, it depends on what your definition of temporary is. It depends on whether, it depends on what your definition of temporary is.
Well, if it's down five months of the year...
You all and the judge and jury on that one.
That might even have to get deferred to the zoning board, I don't know, for a funny interpretation.
Well, but I mean, it's down five months out of the year. I would think temporary is probably...
But some, but some towns actually define what they consider temporary. That's what I'm saying. Some towns actually define what they consider temporary. Sometimes it's four months, sometimes it's six months, sometimes it's, you know, two months.
If six months became an issue, I'd say, okay, we'll put it up like, May 1st and take down November 1st. But to have to go through, that would be, would be torture.
Okay, okay. What about, what about, you know, if we have some sort of emergency weather type situation, is this something that could be taken down if you needed to? Like if there was a hurricane warning or something like that, you'd be able to...
Oh, absolutely. I mean, these things are built to come, the best answer, we have had them put up and take them down three times a year.
Right.
And this time, we're going to own it instead of running it. We're sure not going to want to put it at risk. And again, I think we've been good stewards.
What's your lead time on this? Is it two or three days to put it up and take it down? Does it go up in a day? I don't have any sense. It's a huge...
It goes up in a day.
Goes up in a day, okay.
But you need more than a day because then you've got to put the chairs and the tables in. Yeah, and we would, if you gave us the permit, we'd probably put in permanent anchors. I want to say permanent, I don't mean, we're screwing them. And it would make the job much easier for our people when they put them up and take them down.
I mean, I'm assuming you're going to have to have some kind of anchors out there anyway because in the wind, you don't want to have any kind of...
Oh, yeah, I mean, we, it's, we would do it right. All I can say is we've been doing it, I think, right for 50 years, and we want to be good citizens and do it right.
Any other questions or comments from the board on the tent? Tell us about foot golf.
Okay. What, what do I, can I get approval on the tent tonight so we can start shopping for it, or am I asking too much?
Michelle, I'm going to look to you. Do we need to, if we say we restrict it to six months or a ZBA determination of temporary?
I mean, there, I think the request from the applicant was whether or not this would ultimately be an amended site plan or a, or a kind of a minor site plan amendment, and you could send it right down to the building department to get. So that's the question, how you want to do that. If you actually want to make a resolution with some sort of conditioning or any other, or if you wanted to ask him to provide you any additional information. So all those are up to your, you know, you have to decide what you want to do tonight on that.
I like doing the, say it's, whatever they say is temporary.
I'm sorry, sir.
That, that, again, the key would be, we'd have to find out what, what constitutes temporary, and you'd have to abide by that.
But Mr. O'Brien, aren't you really the judge and jury on that?
Actually, we're not. Turns out there is a definition of that. But I think what we're saying is, I'd be more than okay to say, approve the tent on it, whatever is deemed a temporary basis.
I'd like to hear a little bit about how the foot golf will work in combination with the, just so I get an understanding, and then circle back to that conversation if you wouldn't mind. Because I just want to hear, like, how, what gets stalled and that kind of stuff.
Can I get clarification? Are you saying that our code does define temporary structure?
I believe that we do have a temporary, although I'm not, there is temporary defined, although I'm not sure it's related to the structure. So I have to look at the code for that. Yeah, would you mind?
Okay.
And I believe it's a newer definition, Jeanne. So it's probably one of the, the newer.
While we do that, go ahead and tell us about foot golf.
On the foot golf, number one, I'm embarrassed, they say haste makes waste. I wanted to get this in for this meeting, and I did a lousy job in several respects. One, you see the mark that shows berm? What I did is I drew an arrow for the person...
I'm just going to have, we can't hear you when you're not by the microphone. We just need you to stay near the mic.
I drew an arrow for the, draw, you know, to point out the berms because that was our protection for balls going that way. And he misunderstood and drew a berm in there. I've got to bring you a new map with the berm gone.
Okay.
Yeah, it was my mistake, and I paid the price for it. The second issue...
I'm sorry, you said it was mislabeled. What is really there? Did I hear you say, that's where a fence is going to be?
There is, if you look, let me put up one of the maps if I can. May I bring that easel over to me?
Sure, sure.
Yeah, you can carry the mic over.
No, there is a mic there.
There is a mic right there.
Oh.
He can speak right from there.
You can speak from there.
You're, Brendan, can I just ask you to... If you just move the microphone forward a little bit, Brendan, we...
This one's easier. There is about a four-and-a-half-foot berm that runs, there's about a four-and-a-half-foot berm that runs from the, between what was the old driving range and the parking lot. And then there's the building. So what I was trying to point out was that we had the berm, which was a containment, that balls wouldn't go up and over. We did show on the other side a post and rail fence, and the engineers properly say you should show their, like, a wire fence so that balls can't go out on the road, which is absolutely true. He raises issues that I think would cause us to want to redesign. He raises issues, and they're legitimate ones, that, he says that if we're going to plant plants and if we're going to plant trees, that this could be considered disturbance of the dirt. And before we would go through that, because then it becomes so expensive, I'd rather keep it as just plain grass as it is now, and just have the golf holes where they are and just cut the grass shorter where we could call a green. So that, what I'm going to do is come back to you with a plan that will not show any of the accoutrements, which unfortunately would drive us into a situation where we would have to do things that are impractical and would make it inefficient and economically not viable.
Okay, so set aside the changes you'll make. That's fine. You can come back to us with a new drawing. Tell, tell us what foot golf is and what you, how you would intend to use it. Pretend the drawing is exactly the way you want it, and then just tell us a little bit about it.
Foot golf started in California. I thought I attached to the papers that I gave to you a description. But what it is, is you can put, starting, it's shorter, you can put 18-foot golf holes in a nine-hole golf course. The holes are placed at least 100 feet from the greens because you don't want people running on your golf greens. They're placed on the side in the rough, and you dig a hole that is 21 inches across and about seven, eight inches deep. You put a flag in there. And the intent is to see from tee to green and into the hole, how many times you have to kick the ball to get it into the hole. It's exactly golf, but using your feet rather than a club.
And a soccer ball?
Soccer ball, yes. And it has caught on very strongly in California. It is moving this way. And at, what the old Playboy Club was over in New Jersey, they put it in. My wife and I went over, and we talked to the people there, and it seems that it's a very popular sport, apparently mostly for 18 to 25 to 30 group. And we thought, because it's interactional with the golf and one doesn't disturb the other, that it was a good idea. And we did put in an 18-hole foot golf course on our Teconic Nine. We felt it's golf, and it was, we didn't think we were obliged to come. And I think you'll agree, it was consistent with the way this board was good to us and said, look, when you put up a tree and take down a street, you know, a golf course is a living thing, and you'll modify a little here and there and just be good citizens. And it's worked well over the years. So then, when we wanted to put it down on the old golf course driving range, I spoke to Scott, and Scott said, Phil, I think that's a change he used because it was a driving range. And I said, gee, you know, we're, we got a sand trap there that we use, and we use it for chipping. But Scott said, come to the planning board, and here I am.
Okay. I have a couple of questions. So first, you said it's about a 8-inch-deep hole, 21 inches wide, so would you...
And about six to seven inches deep, but it has a flag in the middle, so somebody's not going to step in it.
Okay. So, so how would you cover those in the event you needed to use the foot golf course for parking?
Oh, no, no, no. I'm sorry, ma'am. The foot golf course is over on the Teconic Nine, which is nowhere near any portion of this. It is on the east side of Country Club Road, whereas everything we're talking about here is on the west side of Country Club Road.
But what we're showing this map, it's got a draw next to the tent. I'm sorry, the drawing has this course laid out right next to your tent.
Well, what, this is, our proposal is to build a miniature foot golf course for kids, like from five to 12.
Ah, okay.
This is a miniature course. This is not, this would not be appropriate for foot golf. But we thought, you don't have room to do it. But we thought it's, it'd be nice to see kids running out there. It would be nice to bring in a little income. It's harmful to no one. And we, we thought, well, we'd like to do it because we already have the foot golf for the older people, and it would be a nice thing to do for the kids.
So, so again, though, I'm asking, assuming you need to have a hole for your foot golf course.
Oh, I understand. We'd put a, we'd get steel plates.
How are we going to park cars where you're saying you're going to be able to park cars?
We'd put steel plates over it.
Steel plates, okay, perfect.
My apologies for not understanding.
No, that's okay. And then the only other, I guess, initial question I have, and I understand you're going to give us a different map, the only other initial question I have is, you've got Beekman Road here, and you're showing what looks like a post and rail fence.
Yes.
And especially if you're saying it's going to be kids playing in this field, how do we make sure that we don't have balls going out onto the road? So is there going to be netting around there?
We would put a...
You wouldn't need the kind of netting we need for golf balls, but even soccer balls can get kicked.
You know, what do you call it? Scott, what do they call it? A fence that has wire with squares?
Page wire.
Page wire, yeah.
Like vinyl coated chain link, maybe black.
No, I wouldn't want to put chain link. I'd rather use something like a page fence, something that's neat and going to be unoffensive, and just nail it to the post and rail fence, keeps the balls out, out of the road.
You just have to watch maybe the height, though.
Yeah, I think you're going to be a little short on height if you're only doing, you know, post and rail.
For five to seven-year-old kids, we thought 30 inches would be plenty.
Yeah, how hard are they kicking it when they drive? Like their initial drive, how far, they're kicking it, I mean, they could kick it over.
But you're talking about kids. Kids are going to kick the ball. And they're going to challenge each other who can kick it higher, farther, better. I know what the intent is.
Who can hit the car? Who can hit the car?
There's going to be a lot, there's going to be a lot of challenges, and I hear you. So I want to make sure we don't have kids running out onto the road and we don't have balls going out in front of us.
With, given the age of the players, I think 30 inches or three feet is more than adequate to keep them out of the road.
I'm going to disagree with that.
Really? Well, whatever you'd like. I mean, we'll do it.
Okay. Let's have you, let's, let's have you go ahead and redraw what you're going to redraw here.
Okay.
And revise it, that's fine. Understanding, give us something for the parking where you, if you have to convert this course into parking, you said steel plates over the holes. If there's any other changes you need to make for, for the greens or protection of anything, just let us know what that looks like, so we understand that with your tent and with foot golf, they still work together in the event you need that course for your extra parking.
The tent will be where it always was, and the parking will be there. And we wrestled, and one of the reasons I stressed in my letter to you is that we would disturb no sod is because that sod is now 50 years old, and it's sturdy and can take cars going on it and take a lot of abuse. But once you chew up grass and replant it, it's forever to get it strong. So...
I have the definition of temporary. It's a structure without any foundation or footings that shall be removed within a six-month time period. Temporary structures in place for more than one month must have approval of the Department of Engineering and may be referred by the engineer to the planning board for comment.
Okay. So I think we're at the planning board for comment. Which is fine. Is there a permit required then for it?
No.
Or just notification to the building department that you're putting, when you put it up and when you take it down?
Right, so that it can be enforced, basically.
So six months is your timeline. So do you want to give us the date range?
I will say that we would say May 1st to October 30th. Yeah, that's one day less than six months.
All right, fair enough.
And tour falls, it says, once you take it down, it doesn't say how long it has to be down before it goes back out.
And I'm, well, it's a six-month time period.
Well, I'm going to say if it's, if you're putting it up May 1st, you don't envision needing it for a Halloween party or something like that. Do you want to say November 1st in case?
I'd love to say November 1st if that's agreeable with you.
I'm fine with May 1st to November 1st, but I'll look at the board.
No, I agree. November is fine.
Can I consider that an approval?
Well, we're going to, we'll...
Hold on there, young fellow.
So close.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to oversteer.
So the foot golf, you need to come back to us.
Unfortunately, yes, because I, haste made waste, and I apologize for wasting your time. But he gave us the chance to talk as...
No, no, that's, yeah, that was fine.
But also rethink the barrier to the road, that...
How high do you want it?
I don't know. You know, I would just ask some of the other proprietors, like, you know, that have kids out there. How hard do they hit it?
I guess even in other point of clarity, even though it's intended for younger children, aren't adults actually going to play? Because, I mean, you're not going to send five and seven-year-olds out on their own. They're going to be out there with a parent or a sibling, and they're going to be playing along with them, just like you would at a mini, you know, regular mini golf.
Good. I don't, like, I'm, you know, I'm a minimum. Tell me what you want, I'll put it on the map. That's why I'm asking. What, what, six feet?
I think minimum six feet with netting or something like that, even if it's a post and rail and you just have the netting up about the six feet. Because what we don't want is for kids to be encouraged to climb over something and try to go running out into roads. That's really going to be a bad thing.
I'm not disagreeing. Whatever you think is reasonable, we agree to. So it'll be, I'll show it as six feet.
Six feet up netting, and if you want to have the post and rail in front of it so it still looks nice, I'm fine with that. But at least six feet.
And once it's six feet high, I might eliminate post and rail because it might look silly. But I hear you, and it'd be a safe six-foot fence.
On commercial, I don't know, Michelle, is six feet okay?
I don't know how it applies to commercial, though.
Yeah, I have to look at the code. But I have a question.
You know, and if the neighbors start seeing some kind of fencing going back up, wasn't worth paying a bit, you know, complaining the most about the fence?
Well, this is, the foot golf, we're not looking at approving foot golf tonight. We're just talking about what would need to come back in front of us. And so it may or may not need photopublic hearing, you know.
Six feet, that's a lot of, this is only...
We're not making that decision. To me, that's not mine. The tent is a temporary structure.
To a T-bomb?
I'm sorry, guys, we've got too many conversations happening.
What I'm saying is, is there a point where you start kicking the ball?
Yes.
And is that always orientated away from Beekman Road?
When I, when we come back, everyone will be oriented away from Beekman Road.
Because obviously, that will help mitigate, that'll help mitigate the possibility of somebody looking like...
I hear you, and that's the wonderful part of this discussion. This, you can lay it out any way, so that, we'll lay it out so that no hole has the ball coming toward a green, which is toward Beekman Road.
That'd be good.
Okay.
As always, thank you for...
All right. So we'll have you come back for a discussion when you're ready on your mini golf. But for tonight, do I have a motion to approve the tent on a temporary basis? And Scott, I'll ask you if you want to add anything to this in just a second, to approve the 60-by-100-foot tent in the location shown on the map dated December 18th, 2014, for a period of not more than six months to run from May 1st through November 1st or some shorter timeframe?
So move second?
Second. And before we vote, Scott, is there anything that you want to require with regard to notification to the building department or anything like that?
Well, before the notification, obviously notification so we can kind of release the six-month duration, but...
six month duration, but, you know, when you have a tent from a tent company, I would imagine they're kind of certifying the integrity and I'm not, I mean, I'm not that familiar.
They're binary.
Right. And that's my point. My, my preference would be to have an engineer review the tent drawing, the structural elements, because you're going to have maybe 300 people underneath this. And there would be a PE stamp on the tent plan, so everybody knows exactly what you're building, it's been reviewed by.
I don't call that.
Yeah, that would, that would just be my request.
Mr. Chase has got to eat too.
Wait a minute, what's that going to cost? Not that I, just in the interest, what's that going to cost?
I don't know.
Ball mark?
What, the tent? Or its certification?
Getting the certification.
It would only have to do it the one time, provided.
It's the design.
It's the design, yeah.
Yeah, it's safety.
Ms. Gee, could I ask for one thing in your motion? Make it of each year, because the way you worded it, it could be deemed zoning for once.
Fair enough. Fair enough. So we have a motion on the table, modified with the requirement to have a professional engineer review submitted to the building department prior to wrecking the tent.
Once.
Right. Right. Prior to the first annual placement of the tent on the site. And do we have, and to allow the tent to be replaced on an annual basis in same location, same construction. And in the event that that construction is going to change or you're going to replace the tent or anything like that, you would need to, again, go back to the building department on an annual basis and show that if the drawing is changing, if the tent is changing, you need to notify us. So with that amendment, do I have a motion?
So moved.
So another motion and a second amended motion, all in favor? Any opposed?
Thank you for this.
Come back to us at the foot golf when you're ready.
I'll see you on February the what?
What's up?
February what?
Our next meeting is that you would, if you submit to us before the end of January, the earliest meeting would be February 17th.
Yeah, I look forward to seeing you on February 17th. And thank you all very much.
Thank you.
You're, you're, your tent manufacturer might be able to stamp it for you.
Well, that's exactly what I'm hoping.
Hey, Phil, this assistant you brought, he's just been rattling the paper all night. You got to get a better assistant next time.
Thank you, Brendan.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda this evening is the Stewart's traffic study on Route 52. Michelle, can we just check and see if he?
He was here.
Oh, there, sorry. Forgive us.
He's loading up the computer and we didn't even see him.
You can run, but you can't hide.
Apparently unless you're in our peripheral vision.
Find a good foot golf course. I don't mean to get him moving. That's not going to happen. Beautiful foot golf. If you need more.
If you have a couple more, that'd be great.
Go ahead. Flag and look on. Oh, you got it. Thanks.
Thank you.
My name's Chuck Marshall. I'm the real estate representative from Stewart's. Before Brendan gets into the traffic study, which is, you know, obviously really what we're here to discuss tonight, in my conversation with him about our original proposal that had a five pump display, which we perceived to be a as of right presentation, there was a reminder that we were using a portion of the residential property for the back portion of a commercial driveway and septic system. And as of right, that wouldn't be appropriate. So the plan that doesn't have the aerial submitted to you is a true as of right. By eliminating the fifth pump, we're able to move the project to the east and bring all of the necessary pertinences onto the commercial properties. So in theory, without abutting or, you know, using the residential property that we do have under contract, we would still be able to develop an as of right plan.
Okay. Okay.
I mean, other than that, I'm just.
Do you want to maybe benefit the board if you could show the, your, the other option, which is the realignment of Fishkill Hook Road? I don't know if we can do that on, you have, can you do that digitally too, up on the board?
Actually, I can. So I apologize, I, I didn't think that far in advance. I don't have an electronic version of the, the road realignment.
It's fine.
I do have a different version of the road realignment, as commented by Brendan and Joe today via email. And that would be essentially putting an S in the road and moving the store to the east without using the portion of the Talon Highway that'll be abandoned, should we eliminate the eastern entrance of Fishkill Hook Road at 52.
Okay. Does that get you out past the, all of the issues with the creek and the drainage and the culvert?
I haven't reviewed it in any detail. It's just, it's another potential option.
That's an actual realignment of the road or just a?
Realigning the road, but trying to shift it as far to the west as possible and putting the, putting the station to the east.
And you think that picks up enough room to get the left turn lane? Is that your trying to accomplish?
Or, or it would be less of an impact to the stream. I haven't reviewed it in any detail yet.
And that eliminates the other building? This would eliminate the second building?
That would eliminate the second building. The, the second building, even in the, the first presentation, the second building is, I mean, that's, that's up in the air, I think, anyway. I, I will be very candid, I've said in front of this board before that I like the, I do like the road realignment because it does drive more cars in front of our store and I do think it provides a little more sensitivity to the neighbors. But I do not like this presentation. This presentation, yeah, I mean, basically the only access to and from the store is off the road, so anyone who would use their store would have to come in off of that road under the assumption that the back would be eliminated.
Why would it have to be like that?
Yeah.
I mean, I think you want at least one access from the side road, but why couldn't you have one, one?
Because you could, you could, you only have one, because the way it would be configured.
There's a stream, well, stream channel there, I don't know if it is clear to you, maybe Chuck could just point it out, why you can't have another, you said a little channel that flows all the way to that culvert crossing 52.
You could potentially have two access points on a realigned Fishkill Hook.
Right.
You just wouldn't be able to have one from 52. And the other, you know, the other.
Not even just for a right in, right out?
Well, I just don't know if there's room. Again, I haven't reviewed it in detail, but it doesn't look, you know, because pretty soon after that entrance becomes the culvert and the stream.
So here with the, someone making, someone coming east on 52 isn't required to enter the road. They could, even if they were going up Hook Road, they could enter the site, use the facility and then continue to Hook Road, but in the proposal that I just flipped, everyone has to come down that road to enter the store.
Brendan, tell, tell us again what the challenge is on moving the realigned road further to the east.
Further to the east, right. There's, well, there's, there's an existing, I think there are four and a half by five foot twin culverts that cross Route 52 and carry this small stream. It is a Class C stream, so, you know, I mean, it does have some potential to get permitted. But moving it, if we were to move the realigned road further to the east, really the problem with that is even if you were to overcome the stream issue, where it would come out onto 52, then you start to develop conflicts with the development, the triangular development that's on the corner of Fishkill Hook and 52 and also the spa that's across the street, the access driveway to that spa. You wouldn't, you can't get it to line up across from that. It's, the spa is too far to the east. So you end up having, you know, a driveway access that would be in pretty close proximity to this, you know, to a driveway into the site. So that, that's what makes it more difficult to, to slide the road to the east.
So the possibility to close off one of the, because the spa has kind of a U-shaped entrance. If it closed off one of those two entrances and opened up same entrance all the way at the far end of their parking lot, you wouldn't be able to realign directly across from that?
You, you would have to create a new entrance into their lot.
Yeah, the stream, I think, is right there.
And you would have to cross the stream, yeah, there's no doubt about that.
No, I get you, you have to cross the stream, trying to.
So there's, there is some potential for that.
What are you saying, Laurie, to shift the entrance into the spa?
Mm-hmm. Well, one of them, there's two right now.
You, you wouldn't be able, you wouldn't be able to catch either one of the entrances you, because you would, you would run into the corner lot. You'd have to real.
What I'm saying, the spa has, the spa has like a little U-shaped, two entrances here. What I'm saying is you'd bring it out at the far end of their parking lot.
You could do that.
And cut it, and maybe close off.
The middle one.
Close off the middle one.
The middle one is their main access.
Well, then close off the eastern one. Again, I, I know we're not here to talk about the spa, but I'm just trying to see if there's something feasible to keep.
And I, you know, and I think, you know, part of Chuck's concern is that if he can, you know, and part of actually, when, when Joe had this idea, asking Chuck to evaluate moving the road further to the west is, again, trying to get, see if there's a way for him to develop the site, you know, sort of, sort of as of right, where he wouldn't need to impact the residential property, because then, you know, it just, it just makes it more cumbersome from, from his perspective.
So, so hold that thought. Can you flip the, the board one more time so I can see that S shape? So say for a minute that you did, let's say there was a rezoning of that residential parcel to commercial, or even if the front portion of it, X number of feet back from 52 to commercial.
Right.
Does that change how far over to the west we can go and allow a driveway from 52 into the parking lot?
Well, I think then you get, you get, the constriction then is going to be the alignment of the road. Because you have to make, there's a, you know, there's a, there's a parcel, you know, where the old general store is, there's an adjacent parcel right next to that, and the road has to curve around that parcel and you're going to end up getting some pretty funky geometry in there and that's.
That curve becomes more substantial because you're moving further to the west.
So then, you know, you, we'd have to, I mean, I haven't even looked at it from the aspect of the design standard for the alignment of the road, but we'd need to look at that.
Okay.
So, but that would be problematic.
But it would also keep traffic from going 50 miles an hour down that spur too.
Yeah, and we can, it can be looked at, you know, that's certainly a possibility. And then the other, you know, the other aspect of it is the, if, if in fact the road was realigned and the portion of Fishkill Hook Road, you know, the, the eastern side was abandoned, there's a, there's potential that that road could then become part of this lot and that could expand that area too.
And what, potentially part of the triangle lot up at the front corner too, right?
There's some potential for that, right. Up, you know, up until probably the culvert.
So, so Brendan, what's your recommendation here?
Well, I guess maybe just backtracking a little bit, we did, we did study the traffic. We did, and we did look at the two alternatives. This alternative that Chuck has on the aerial and then the alternative with the realigned road, we looked at the two intersections of Fishkill Hook Road to the east and west and then, and then the driveway. One of, one of the scenarios, I think the scenario that he's calling the as of right had five pumps and 10 fueling positions. The realigned road one had six pumps and 12 fueling positions. When we, when we looked at the traffic for that, you know, once, even in the build year, we were, we were looking at the connection to 52 in the, in the PM critical peak time having a, a level of service F, a low F, but still an F. So that was, and then, but looking at that a little bit further, it also doesn't need a strong warrant for a signal. So once you're at that point of, you know, not that great a level of service, you're faced really with a couple of options. One is to maybe look to get a traffic signal and the second is maybe reduce the size of the, the development a little bit. And that's, you know, that's, and speaking with Chuck, that's what we looked to do and that's what resulted in dropping the, the pump count down to four to eight fueling positions. If he does that, when we, when we look at the traffic, then in the PM critical peak, we're down to a level of service E, which is, you know, pretty typical for a driveway or a road connection add onto a busy state highway.
And Brendan, that's for?
So this is the road or the driveway?
It, it really is both of them. You know, there's a slight difference.
And that's left turn only or right turn?
It's, 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 it's the left turn is the critical movement coming out.
But it's all motion.
What's that?
It's all motion, though.
Right, because there's not going to be any turn lanes and which?
No, there could be a turn, even, even if there was a turn lane, it's still, the left turn is the critical movement, even if they're separated from the right turn lane, which would be practical anyway.
Again, I was, I was waiting for the movie to come out rather than, but I'm having trouble, which alternatives were which in the book?
Alternative, in terms of alternative one and alternative two?
Yeah.
So it's page 15 and 16?
Uh, hang on.
Right, but I meant, which of these, there's three drawings we've seen.
Right.
Which is which and which one's not represented here?
The one with the S is not represented.
You just didn't.
But it's, the analysis is the same.
Yeah, I was going to say, in, in theory, the same.
Yeah, okay, that was my next question. Okay, so.
So there's no, I mean, basically, there's no, you know, the two alternatives, there's no clear cut winner from a traffic perspective. Okay, so, I mean, I think the one, but from a level of service, I mean, there's certainly some practical sense to eliminating a connection or one of the connections add on to, on to 52. So with the roadway realignment, that, you know, I mean, that's a significant gain if you can then abandon the, you know, the, the eastern Fishkill Hook connection.
So we're talking down to four pumps and road realignment?
That's one option, yes.
I mean, how's that settling with Stewart's?
The one thing I don't like about the S is the driveway to the north, you're very close to the intersection of 52 and the new road. So I mean, as cars come out there, they're going to be backed up into it.
There's, there's an inability for stacking and there's also a great issue. Again, this was not.
I understand.
This was done like as I was leaving the office, just, you know, this afternoon type thing.
And I hadn't really had a chance to even see it or look at it.
And engineered.
Did you see it?
I don't.
Can you see it now?
But I think we're comfortable that that's not.
That's what it looks like.
Okay, right. And I mean, and, and one of the answers to that, there may be some, there may be some potential if the road, if Fishkill Hook Road was claimed as part of the development of the development site, then you might be able to shift both of those driveways a lot further down. But again, it's just, it's just one option.
But then you're going to, you're going to put the convenience store back on the west side of the road, not the east side?
No, not necessarily. I mean, you're just going to, I mean, you, I have to look at it in more detail, but I think there's, and, and really, the development of that scenario, again, is just, you know, just another option to look at, also to, you know, to reduce, you know, the, you know, the fact that you end up having to go to three boards. Because I think the other, the other scenario where the road gets realigned, and, and even with the four-pump scenario, you're looking at zoning variances for the offsets. Michelle can correct me if I'm wrong.
And a rezone from the town board.
A rezone from the town board for the, for the residential lot.
So the sequence of events, if I understand the town process to be correct, would be town board, rezone, planning board referral, town board, rezone, set the public hearing, town board approval, zoning board, zoning board, public hearing.
Five years later. You make that sound difficult. That was pretty easy.
Well, see, I mean, you know, I just, I just laid out the sequence. I mean, they're only my nights away from my family. It's not a big deal.
I agree.
Can we go back to the more feasible alternative? So Brendan, I think one of the things we need to figure out is logistically, how far to the east can the through road be? To see how much space you have for development to the west.
If you could figure it out.
And I think that one of the, while I understand the sequence of board approval or board appearances to be, you know, relative, DOT would definitely weigh in on the, the access point where this road intersects 52. So the initial, initial application or time that I came here, we had used the previously approved location of the 52 intersection. So we would have to get them to weigh in very soon. Because there is a DOT guardrail besides the culvert.
But I, but what I'm getting at is I want to make sure if we can figure out how far to the east the through road could actually be, that tells us how much space, land you have to the west that's still zoned commercial without having to do a rezone to see what fits there.
And, and I would think that that's not enough room for the, the store and the gas presentation.
I don't know.
Yeah.
I don't know. I don't know the answer to that either, but, I mean, I mean, there's, there's not that much room. I mean, you could move it, you know, I don't know how much distance you have between the entrance and the culvert right now. I mean, there's some distance there, but not a lot.
I mean, if you're willing to do the S this way, you could do the same kind of curve to the east to buy a little bit more space within that commercial area and position this. So I just think you want to make sure you've checked all of that, because before you need to go through rezones or go through a ton of different things, if you can figure out where, whether or not this will fit with the through road. Obviously, our preference is the through road, you know, and possibly the ability to either eliminate some of the movements on either side, or even cul-de-sac one or the other of the, the ends. I, I know that's not 100% feasible with not wanting to have the F-rated intersection, but-
Does this result in an F? The scaled-down pumps, you still shown six here, but if you-
No, if you, if you go down to four pumps and eight fueling positions, in the build year, he'll avoid the F. I mean, if we project, you know, the DOT always wants us to project that five years. You project that five years, you're going to probably get into a low-level F. But that's, you know, generally not the requirement of the board, but the requirement of the DOT.
Okay. Michelle, do we have a, I don't have a sense with, with rezoning. This is a parcel that's already next to commercial parcels. It's already owned by this applicant.
Well, in a, in a correction, it's not owned by the applicant. It's under contract.
This applicant's contract vendee then to, or contract purchaser, I guess, to-
Well, we have the rights to represent the property via our, our contract, but we have not closed on the property. That's just one of the, I mean, it's a-
Okay. Do we have a sense that, I mean, it would be one parcel, it would be already contiguous to a commercial zone, business zone, I should say?
I think, I mean, obviously, it would be up to the town board, would it be their decision whether or not to rezone the property. And I'm sure, I mean, the considerations, there'd be considerations for the commercial aspect, but also because there are residences nearby, I'm sure that they would also be concerned about the residential properties as well.
Okay. So what are we recommending you move forward with?
What, is that a question?
What are we recommending the applicant?
You haven't gone to DOT yet, or have you?
We have not gone to DOT yet.
I mean, I think it's a step, given the-
Sure. And, I mean, we can certainly reach out to the DOT. And I just think the only, you know, if, I don't, I don't know if the consensus of the, the board is to, to look at the through road option, then we should, you know, refine, refine one or both of those to see what, what can be done, and if, if anything can be done within the parameters of the existing commercial. And, and see what, see what that says.
Yeah, I mean, if you curve it out to the east, but still come back to wherever you need to, to, you know, to, to not have to jump over the culverts and all of that, you know, I just, I think it's worth looking at. You may not be able to do it. It may not be a reasonable layout for the road.
You're saying shift it, shift it to the east and cross the stream?
Um-
Right?
Neither of these is the drawing that you have.
Yeah.
But, but basically, this is 52. If you could curve it this way, but still bring it back to where it needs to be, you may be able to buy enough property within here to still lay out the site within the commercial area and not overlap onto the residential.
Right.
I'm just, I mean, it's worth it to, to take a look at that and see if it can-
Yeah, you could, I mean, you could do that with that presentation now, and go the other way with the curve, as you're saying.
Right.
It does-
I just don't know if it gets you enough to get you out of the residential parcel fully.
That, that, that's not on the residential, yeah, that's not on the residential property.
I thought it was. I thought it was overland.
I'm sorry. It's, it's a couple of-
The canopy and the, the parking are over a couple of feet, yeah.
Off that. So if you can curve it and pull it a little bit to the east, it may, it may work.
Right. Then that would get you, that would get you out of the rezone, you would-
That would get you out of the rezone, but you definitely need variances.
Right.
Okay.
But it would definitely get you out of the rezone, right. All right, so we can-
So the discussion with the DOT, and then look, let's look at options to see if we can avoid the rezone. By we, I mean you. I'm looking at Brendan because he did the traffic study, but-
Right. And we'll, and we'll update the, you know, we'll update the traffic study to reflect the current pump count.
Update the traffic study, I'm sorry, to what?
To, to reflect the current pump count. Because the, the study that's out there now reflects the-
Okay.
The 10 and 12 fueling positions.
Is there anything else you want to cover with the board tonight, or anything else that we need to do? I mean, until we can get this settled on your plan as far as the, the through road and your layout, I think you're, that's really the next thing you need to do.
I, I mean, I guess just from an appearance standpoint, that seems to be the only thing that would govern where I go next or what I do next. The only thing I can, I mean, I can't even go to the Architecture Reboard because you have to open the public hearing, which you're not going to do without a plan.
You can certainly have a discussion meeting with the ARB.
Yeah, I'm at, yeah, I'm at, I'm at the point of, I believe I've satisfied their architectural request.
Yeah, then you would, you would wait till we schedule our public hearing, and their public hearing and ours will run, it'll be the same meeting. We, we stand in for the ARB when we open our public hearing. So you have to have, as long as you've gotten their approval, the, you'll have the, the elevations of your building as part of our public hearing.
Okay.
So Brendan, you'll, you'll work to get a meeting with the DOT, and let's see what we can find out.
Yeah, I think we'll, we'll, we would end up being the next, the second meeting of next month. And we'll reach out to the DOT, and we will refine this, and then-
So you think you can do that before the second meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
As well.
Okay. So the second meeting next month is February 17. So if you can shoot for a meeting with the DOT before that, we'll have you back on for a discussion item and hopefully settle the plan.
Is that coordinated through you? Yep. Okay, I'll take you.
Move you forward.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chuck.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is the Muse at Hopewell, 89 units on Route 376. And while we, while we get your drawings up on the board and everything, I'll just provide a quick overview to the board. This is on for discussion tonight. It's the new and improved Muse at Hopewell plan. It is the same name, but it's a new location. As everybody remembers, we looked at this on Joe's Mother's Road, and the planning board approved it and passed the, passed the approval over to the town board for a special permit. The town board denied that special permit. There was significant comment from the public at the time that it was a great development, but we, the, the public did not like the location. And so, at the point in time where the town board denied the special permit, that application at Joe's Mother's Road was no longer viable, and couldn't come back to the planning board. There was some litigation with the town with regard to violations of Fair Housing Act, Americans with Disabilities Law. And there was settlement reached between the town and this developer to offer an alternate site. It happens to be a site that's currently, there's a much larger site. So what you see on the map here is a 142-acre site. The new Muse at Hopewell is proposed on 22 acres of that 142-acre site. It's town-owned, so as part of this new application, there would be a subdivision of the land that would be sold by the town to the developer. The rest of the property, though, the 142 acres, has a few things going on with it. And because of that, and because of the subdivision, the town would actually take on the effort to complete seeker for the 142-acre parcel, including this 22-acre parcel. So this is a little bit of an unusual process for us. We haven't had something like this before, where the town owns a property that's being subdivided. So, and Michelle, I'll look to you to give us kind of an overview of what you're working on, but your AKRF is actually going to facilitate and create the seeker findings for us. And you'll go through all of the things that we looked at when we looked at the original property, but you're looking at it, at the 100, the whole 142-acre site, certainly including the 22 acres that we'll talk about in a moment. One other quick thing to go over that's also changing, or potentially changing, I should say, is the town board is considering an amendment to the current law that allows the special permit for workforce housing. And if that is approved, it'll be considered this Thursday. If the town board approves it, this board would then also be the issuing body for the special permit, as well as continuing with site plan approval. So a few changes in the works. We'll, we'll get back to everybody on, on whether or not the town board takes action on Thursday. But I just wanted to make sure again, because it's a, it's a kind of unusual situation for us. But again, as the, as the result of that litigation with the, and, and the stipulation of settlement with the town, we are considering a 22-acre site now with 89 units or 88 units?
Eighty-eight units and a super's unit, eighty-nine.
Okay, so with, with 89 units, including one unit that would be intended as a super, superintendent apartment or unit, and it would be located on a 22-acre parcel. So a slightly lower density, but certainly more units than the original 68 that were proposed at the, the former location. There's a couple of things that we'll need to do. First, I think because we're going to follow a new seeker here, it's a new site, we have to do all of the things we would normally do for seeker, even though it'll be the town consultants that'll be performing the study, we need to declare our intent to be lead agency. And then, you know, again, our responsibility, particularly with this applicant, and I'll, I'll turn it over to you in just a second, would be to still consider all the things we would normally consider for site plan. So there's a lot of things we talk about when we look at a site plan, and we'd need to go through all of those things.
Is there a time limit on this?
You know, I don't have that in, in the notes from, from Tom, and again, Tom apologizes. He's, he's not able to be here due to illness. I believe it's, it's approximately six months, sometime in June is the, the limit.
And what, what was the basis for that, if I could ask?
To comply, at the time the previous application was in, there was a funding application in. That application had to be rescinded. There was another window, very small window, to, to reapply the new site. We were able to do that in order to comply with that timeframe, which would be to close late summer, around what-
State, state monies is what I'm, I'm hearing.
The, the tax credit.
Thank you.
That's what drives this, yes.
Thank you.
Thanks.
And so again, just as an example, you know, if, if the seeker work that AKRF is going to do for us indicates that there's a, you know, Indiana bat on the site, and there's going to be restrictions for construction, they will still apply here. It's just the study won't have been done by this applicant. It will have been done by the town, but we'll still need to comply with whatever the recommendations are from the agent, interested and involved agencies as we work through the process. I don't know that to be true. I'm just using that as an example, but-
There's also still a chance that this can't get approved, right? Or will it be approved?
I'm going to defer to Tom on discussion of what, what the resulting actions would be, in the event the planning board does not approve it. But the likelihood would be that the court would then move forward with an approval.
So this will be approved?
But Tom, I, I would want Tom to talk to that in, in more detail. He's our, he's our representative for any of the litigation.
I don't think it would, that, that this would be approved, but potentially Joe's Mother's Road would be approved, if I'm not mistaken, in that court case.
In that court case.
Right.
We, we can ask Tom anything we want to when, when he's, when he's back. I don't want to say that we can't ask more questions. I'm just not prepared. I, I don't have the knowledge that Tom has of, of the stipulations and, and the, the court information. Very good.
All right. Chairwoman G, members of the board, nice to see you again. The last time we were together was that very, very long night. I believe it was the end, what was it, the end of September, early October. I want to personally thank the board for staying as late as you did. We were here, all of us, were here until the wee hours of the morning, in an effort to reach a conclusion, as you previously stated, so that it could move on to the next step to the town board. It was a difficult, long night, but I, I appreciate the board's commitment and staying as late as they did. Thank you. I'm here tonight. The project has been changed somewhat. The location has changed. I'm here tonight with my son and partner, Sean Carney. Here tonight with our partners from Abilities First, Jeff Fox, Ellen Griffin, and our two engineers, Jeff Cantamo and Eric Schloblum from Inside Engineering. The, the development now consists of 88 rental units and one onsite super's unit. Similar to the last proposal, there was a lot of dialogue. I think if anything came out of the last process, I hope, out of all the questions, a little bit was learned about my business or how I conduct my business. Although the location has changed, our commitment, the fact that we're going to develop this, construct it, and more importantly, manage it long-term, has not changed. And presently, the development is 88 units. The onsite super in tenant is an integral part of our onsite management team. Similar to the other proposal, we will have an onsite manager with an office onsite. In addition, one of the buildings will have an office for Abilities First, so they can provide supportive services to their special needs tenants. The, out of the 88 units, 22 will be set aside for the clients of Abilities First, serving the special needs population of the developmentally disabled. Similar to the first development, we, we've been able to incorporate townhomes. It's based on my experience. The townhomes lend itself to a, it replicates homeownership. From a management standpoint, it's, it works quite well. There'll be a total of 36 townhomes. Thirty-two will be rented at 60% of median income. The other four units are up to 80% of median income. The other four units broken down, two two-bedrooms and two three-bedrooms.
Is there, is there any change in the income limits from the last-
We're waiting. We're waiting. They do out, they were due out in December. There was a delay. I'm certainly hoping. I know Westchester, where we do a lot of work, is expecting a, a significant increase in the AMI, and I'm hoping that just will as well. Where we are, as, as, as of today, the 22-bedroom units are eligible for a family up to $49,860. The three-bedrooms, $53,880. The two, two-bedroom units are eligible for a family up to $66,480, and the two three-bedrooms up to $71,840. In addition, there's two other buildings. The first building will consist of 31-bedroom units and a two-bedroom non-rent-bearing super's unit. These 31-bedrooms, we, we would expect a majority of these units to be set aside for Abilities First clients. Out of the 22 units, I believe 18 are targeted to be one-bedrooms and four, two-bedrooms. The second building, in, in addition, in that, in the first building, Abilities First will have an office onsite for their case managers, and also to provide the supportive services for their clients. The second building will consist of 22 units, which includes four one-bedrooms and 18 two-bedrooms. In addition, connected to the second building is a community building, which will house a community space. In addition, it will also contain our onsite management office. The onsite management office is staffed by an employee of our firm, the Carney Realty Group. We are the, we are the managing agent, the developer, yes.
I'm sorry, could you point out where the recreation building is? So it, it literally, it's not special, it doesn't break the line. It's okay, thank you.
And, and we've employed that in, in the past. It's a separate entrance. It is quite nice. In, in the past, we've been able to, at one of our other developments, you walk in, we have a stone fireplace and-
I'm just curious, that's all I was-
I call, that's where I have my fireside chats with the future tenants.
Okay.
And we, we discuss what, what the expectations are.
Okay.
So I'll let Jeff get into some of the site-specific issues here. So I'll let Jeff get into some of the site-specific issues here. But once again, I'm here to answer any questions as they come up. I feel that a lot of questions have come up and been answered in the past, and we will continue to work with the board. I enjoyed working with the board last time, and again, I appreciate your dedication and staying as long as you did that night. I'm going to turn it over to Jeff.
Is this a good opportunity to get sidewalks into Hobo?
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, we should come back to that, because the question would be, where would the sidewalks go? Because...
Into Hobo.
Yeah, you know, I was part of the original Cannon Property Committee that looked at this, and the sidewalks we were envisioning would go in through Trinka Lane. That was the original, because it's much more direct from where that is, right? But rather than try to bring it all the way up 376.
I recall, I recall, walking path.
Something like that, yes.
Walking path.
Yes. Mr. Bryant was on that committee.
But bear in mind, there are residences on the end of Trinka that that walking path would have to go between those homes and so...
But we have the easement, but the town has the easement for that.
We have utilities.
Okay, okay.
Good evening, Jeff Cantamo from Inside Engineering here with Eric Schloblum from my office. I just wanted to clarify what Chairman G pointed out in terms of the parcel. This is what's known as the Cannon Property, it's across the street from where we are. This is the firehouse right here, which shows up on the mapping. Town Hall is right about here. The vacant Cannon Property, Upland sits all in here, and the wastewater treatment plant is to the south, right here. And the 20 acres, I think it's 20.7 acres actually, that we're proposing our development on, sits here. The town is part of the subdivision of the bigger 140 acre parcel, is also proposing a small lot line adjustment with the wastewater treatment plant parcel. That's what that shaded area is there. So that piece of land would actually get merged into the lot of the wastewater treatment plant, leaving us the L-shaped piece, which is about 20 acres. The southwest portion is all floodplain to Fish Gill Creek, and actually, it's been recently delineated as part of the DEC wetland. So we would be staying clear of that in the most part, and our development would sit up here on the higher, drier piece of the property. So with that, I'll show you a little bit about the detail and what drove the layout we're at right now. As Ken pointed out, we have two multifamily buildings, and then four clusters of townhomes. Just for reference, again, this is the firehouse here, and Town Hall here. You are here, where the red dot is. We were actually asked, a couple of things that drove this layout was, we were asked to try to maintain a concept of a loop road that was developed as part of some early planning for the Cannon Property. And what was envisioned there was a loop road that kind of came in like this, came up and came back out to Route 376. So this segment of roadway is intended to be continued in that loop if and when the next phase of the Cannon property is developed. And we were asked to do that by the town as part of our early planning. Another driving factor is the location of the wastewater treatment plant. There is a state guideline that says enclosed wastewater treatment plants should be 200 feet from residential structures, so we've held that 200 feet here. So that's why our units are pushed over in there. And then the third constraint is the actual wetland floodplain, which runs down in here, kind of at the base of the slope. Our layout is superimposed here over the existing vegetation and makeup of the land. Now, this big gray area is an area that's been cleared and been used over the years. But what we wanted to show with this is, from a standpoint of visibility from 376, knowing the sensitivity to that last time, is that there's a fair amount of vegetation that can and will be maintained in the area between our units and 376. There's also quite a distance there. One of the things that actually Brendan brought up, and actually, we brought up in discussions with Scott Bryant about a week ago, is an opportunity maybe to try to relocate the entrance, or leave the entrance, which is for the wastewater treatment plant in its current configuration, and move our entrance over to one that would align with the ingress into the parking lot here between the firehouse and Town Hall. Quite frankly, we find that more attractive from a standpoint of having a residential community with a separate driveway as opposed to one that shared with a wastewater treatment plant with a big sign that says that. And we would love you to tell us tonight to go back and look at that and come back with something along those lines.
That's purely for aesthetics, right? I mean, neither of those is really a big traffic generator, right?
Neither of the uses?
Yeah. I mean, the library, I think, does some, but I mean, I don't think Town Hall is a huge generator of traffic and...
Well, I think the only thing, I mean, things to consider, and what resulted in part of my comment was that, well, I mean, you are going to mix the weight, what little traffic there is that goes to wastewater treatment plant is going to be mixed in with this entrance. The entrance is also opposite the firehouse. So, you know, when those fire trucks need to get out of there, there's going to be a driveway opposite that. And not that it's going to happen often, but it can, and, you know, God forbid something happened at that entrance to the firehouse. So, I mean, that was what resulted in my comment. I mean, I think there's probably more traffic that would come out of the Town Hall entrance opposite a driveway than would come out of the firehouse for certain. But, you know, it wouldn't necessarily be the same.
You're going to have to study how that's going to function, make sure we don't create an F at Town Hall, et cetera, you'll look at that.
But it is primarily for aesthetics, right? I mean, which, the wanting to have a separate drive is, I think...
Yeah, I think it's two parts. Our primary concern would be aesthetics.
Okay, thank you.
But as Brendan pointed out, I do believe from a standpoint of, you know, safety with the firehouse, there may be a compelling reason to move it to the other side. We also have a third reason for us personally, and that is that unbeknownst to us until just last week, there are a fair amount of utilities, there's a gas line, and several force mains that actually come through the Town Hall complex and cross at that driveway where we'd be cutting in, and we would have to lower those utilities while maintaining service with them, and there's reputed rock in that area. So there's some construction concerns there as well. And not that they can't be overcome with time and money, but they're concerns.
Brendan, have we, and maybe you have, have we also looked at lining up a driveway across from the library entrance and bringing it to this site and not connecting at all to where you have the entrance right now? Or is that what you're saying?
No. You mean, having an entrance opposite the library, further to the north?
Further to the north.
Being the access?
And coming across.
Being the secondary access into the Cannon Property, or the only access into this development?
I'm just asking, because I thought, I thought what I understood was that this was supposed to be, I'm going to call it, for lack of a better word, a loop road, that was going to come off 376 over by where the firehouse was, but come back down in, over by somewhere near where the library is. So what I'm saying is, what if we said, well, let's just bring it in from where the library is and not have it continue out to the wastewater treatment plant, and just leave that as its own access for the time being, and you could always connect it later if you needed to, or have some sort of gravel emergency connection?
Yeah, just on this plan, this is the library entrance here.
Yeah.
To the north, and the one we're talking about is here.
Yeah.
Eric, can you zoom in on that, please? The library entrance to us is problematic. I mean, we haven't studied the traffic around it, but my wife's a librarian in that library, and I'm here to tell you that the angle of that and the slope coming up into it, and the width of it, it's really wide, it's a free-for-all. I mean, I travel in and out of it, and there would have to be improvements made there. It would get substantial, and certainly outside of what we've got.
It'll be problematic when we all pull out tonight.
I mean, Eric's moving this up, and you can see the angle.
Sidewalks along the roadway, hop into the town.
Yeah, there's that angle.
Further towards the north, but the access seems to make sense.
Keep going up, Eric, if you don't mind.
Because one of the other issues we had was we couldn't jump the sidewalks over the bridge.
We are over the bridge.
Oh, I thought...
So again...
His first entrance is over the bridge? Okay, I thought the bridge was right around there.
Yeah, the bridge, just for everybody's, the bridge is here, the wastewater plant entrance is here, firehouse with the big throw for the fire trucks is actually right here, right across from the wastewater plant. The south parking lot entrance into Town Hall parking lot's here, and the library entrance is here. And the idea, as Laurie was explaining, originally, I think, with the master plan, was to have an entrance that hit here, came up, looped, and came back actually to here.
Right.
So it went like that.
Yeah, exactly.
And again, this is just my early opinion. My early opinion is, if you were to bring an intersection into here, you'd have a lot of work to do.
Yeah, we haven't looked at the actual physical connection. I mean, what we have started to analyze is just the traffic from the site of the muse, and then some traffic that would be potential traffic from a future development on the remaining...
There was a roundabout kind of kicked around at that location across the library.
Or a little further north.
Somewhere in that.
Yeah, I don't know if it's right there.
Yeah, there you go.
I'm just trying to get to a point though where we can logistically get sidewalks all the way up into town center, so that somebody could walk from a development like this. And I understand what Mike's saying, too, if there's a path that connects to Trinka, but, I mean, this way you'd be staying on the roadways.
Yeah, no, I think even bringing a sidewalk out to 376 is, you know, a must, as part of this, and then, you know, how it gets out of the rest of the way is another question, but...
But to have to bring it backwards towards the firehouse to then have to go...
Right.
That's all right.
Well, we, our thought, and we've thought a bit about, Eric, can you go back to the site plan? We've thought a bit about the sidewalk, although we didn't introduce it yet, but our idea would be, if this loop road is going to continue and take place somehow, you know, our connection would try to be to get to there and get up. Because one of the things we're going to be confronted with with a sidewalk is the next comment's going to be, well, put in a crosswalk to get the kids across the street, and we're not going to be able to put in a crosswalk. I mean, Brendan already knows the answer to that. I mean, you know, DOT's not going to let us put in a crosswalk without a light.
Okay.
I mean, is that fair? Is that fair to say?
Yes and no. I mean, there are certainly state highways that have...
You're telling me people are...
There are certainly state highways that have mid-block crossings. You know, the other aspect of that is then, if there's an intersection created, I mean, anyone is allowed to make a legal crossing of a roadway, even without a crosswalk at an intersection. So, you know, wherever an intersection does come out of 376, someone's going to have a legal right to make a crossing there. You know, the DOT definitely frowns upon mid-block crossings, but you can certainly drive around Hudson Valley and find many mid-block crossings on state highways. But as few as far between, there's going to need to be a real, you know, a specific need demonstrated before they would allow you to do one.
So our position with respect to, you know, advancing our plan really is that, you know, if the board does not feel that the idea of lining with the southerly entrance into the Town Hall parking lot is a better idea than sharing the wastewater plant driveway, we're desirous to proceed with our layout as it is. You know, we're not in a position...
With your entrance as it is.
Pardon me?
With the entrance as it is.
We haven't talked about the layout yet.
Right, the entrance location, right.
Okay. I think we definitely need a way to get pedestrian traffic from this site up into town.
We agree.
Okay.
Right?
And, you know...
With this project, not future project.
Well, I'm not sure what that means, but, you know...
Well, you were saying that, you know, the loop road, you know, in the future, isn't that what you were just saying a while ago? Hoping that the loop road happens in the future?
Correct.
Are you planning on putting the loop road in now?
I didn't hear you, I'm sorry.
The loop road, is that going to happen now, or just going to be stubbed off there?
Our proposal is to stub it off there.
Yeah, and that's where you want to potentially put the sidewalk through.
Correct, and our thought was...
So that can happen, that can never happen.
Correct.
Potentially, so, that's what I'm saying, I think the sidewalks into town should happen with this project, not a future project.
Okay. Brendan, anything else with the entrance?
No, I mean, just a couple, I mean, we have started to study the traffic, I'm going to coordinate that with Michelle, with EAF. What we can tell you is that, you know, considerably less traffic on 376 than there was on 82. I mean, the conflicting peak hour traffic is pretty much almost half of what it was on 82 at the other site. So the level of service that we're going to see, even at the entrance into the development, even though it's a little bit bigger, is actually going to be acceptable.
Okay.
The only other comment, significant comment I had relating to traffic was about secondary or emergency access. I know there was a proposal on the plan, there's another entrance into the Cannon Property just a little bit further north, and the plan was to connect to that with a secondary fire access. But the secondary fire access and the main entrance both converge to the same entrance into the development, so I don't even know the...
Jeff, how far in is the turnaround?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
How far in is the turnaround?
Oh, from 376?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have that.
I can scale it for you.
Brendan, to your point, unless there was an accident right at one of the entrances, you wouldn't necessarily need the emergency.
Oh, no, my comment is that it might be worth, by the way, to try to develop some access to the back of the property. Because if both of them come to the same, you know, converge in the same point, and there's something wrong with that point, you can't get past.
Right.
The back of the cul-de-sac's about 1,100 feet from 376.
Okay.
I was thinking about about 1,000 feet.
Please.
You know, we have spoken, Scott and I have spoken about an option of an emergency access coming around the back again and connecting into the driveway for the wastewater treatment plant as another alternative. Obviously, the idea for build-out of the Cannon Property would be the ultimate solution, because this loop road that was envisioned out front with a development that reaches back this way could then connect back in, and then both projects would benefit from an interconnection. But again, we've got the undubious chore of being the first guy in and trying to solve a bunch of problems, so...
With the buildings in the back, the first two buildings are offset from each other, and you've got full, you basically have the, I'll call it the kind of the central park, you've got the green area between the two buildings, and you've got full access around them. Why didn't you carry that back to keep the other buildings separated and have more of a longer greenway in the center between the buildings? It seems like you've got space for it to kick some of those buildings back and allow that to happen.
Yeah, the wetland line actually kind of does a little bit of an S-turn with the vegetation here.
Right.
We've got some infiltration area here for stormwater. But primarily, the reason we didn't open it up was, one, we kind of tried to balance the parking. By the way, the parking we're showing is full parking conformance. We probably are going to ask the land bank some of that as we move forward, but we figured we'd start with the full McGill. There's a secondary constraint we have, and that is that there's a force main, there's a nine-inch sewer force main that comes from a pump station and kind of back at, off the cul-de-sac of Trinka Lane, that makes its way kind of through this opening here along the top of the slope. And you can almost see, see that path there in the photograph? That path is actually that force main, and it comes right up really close to that unit. So, you know, the idea of, you know, maybe pivoting this unit and opening something up is something we could look at. We are tight, you know, there's a fairly substantial depression right here, which we're utilizing as, you know, stormwater collection area once we do our runoff reduction in water quality treatment with some infiltration systems. So, you know, we're trying to balance a bunch of things. So, you know, we're trying to balance a bunch of things, you know, and primarily they are the wetland setback, the force main, and, you know, stormwater provisions. Right now, the site, there's a little bit of a rise to come into the site here, you're at a high point here, and then the site drains all the way to the back the whole way.
What happens if that was pushed further into Cannon property? I mean, what?
One of the things that we're, we're, again, we're trying to meet with some of the conditions that the town has laid out, and they're trying to preserve as much of the next phase of the Cannon property as possible.
We're, we weren't purview to any of this, so.
Yeah, neither was I.
Yeah, okay.
So, so the off-site, it looks like you have a pond that's going to run off-site. Is that, are you going to size it for your development and then it'll be able to be expanded in the future, or are you sensing it for use?
What, what we're doing is, as I stated, we've got some infiltration areas through the site as we make our way from the high point back. There's, there's two natural depressions. This one, there's one right in here that's fairly substantial, and then there's a slighter one here. Right now, the site drains to those two areas and really doesn't outflow back to the wetland unless, you know, a flood game, in my opinion. What we've been asked to do, we've brought our stormwater there, what we've been asked to do is analyze a potential development for the contributing area to the north to be sure that that depression would not only work for our purposes, but also have capacity to work for the contributing area to the north. And we've agreed to do that.
You wouldn't necessarily size it right now for that, or you-
Well, it's, it's, it's a natural depression that we're not changing, and we're only using a small portion of it. And so, our analytical work can show if there's capacity still in it with the water from both sites. And we'll, we'll do that analysis. We've agreed to do that.
Okay. I guess I was confused because the plan that I'm looking at is a proposed stormwater detention basin, which to me means construction, but you're saying you wouldn't actually be constructing anything there.
We really would be constructing an outlet to it that would function the way the change in hydraulics would be to maintain the post-development flows.
You would have to clear vegetation or anything like that?
We would. We probably would be clearing vegetation.
There's a house back there, or at least the ruins of an old house. And where is that sitting relative to this drainage? I mean, they're close, right?
Yeah. This is, this is actually a good shot Eric just brought up, and this shows the topography. So, this, this ring of topo here is going downward. That, that depression is about 12 feet deep, and then there's a second depression right here, which is about six feet deep. Here's the house, or the remains of the house, and then there were some outbuildings.
No, no, there's another, there's another house. Maybe it's the one that's shown in the corner. That, okay. Jeff, is there, oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Is there water in that depression now?
No.
It, it drains out?
Right.
You're expecting that that'll work as an infiltration basin?
Well, we, we haven't modeled it as an infiltration basin. Reality is that, you know, right now, nothing flows out of it from what we've observed, but we're going to do some testing in and around it and make sure we can model it in a way that's representative of how it really does function.
Is this the only layouts you've got, layout you have, or any alternative layouts?
It's the only layout that we submitted to you. We did work up several layouts in developing, you know, the concept as part of, you know, the agreement that was reached between Ken's group and the town. And as I said, you know, we, the primary direction that we got from the town was incorporate the loop road concept and, and try to build off of it, number one. And number two, try to keep your development tight to the south so that the north portion of the property can be preserved for the future.
So we're locked into this layout? I mean, we never had an option to see any of those.
We're locked into this location. Whether it can be massaged, I don't know, but that's the, that's the location. That's the acreage.
Yeah, I think, Jason, just-
Were there other layouts with this acreage or no?
Well, what we would be, just so we're clear, if you take a look at the map, I, I think, and again, we've accepted the fact that this property line here to the north is a constraint that's been given to us by the town.
Okay.
Okay, that's something we've accepted. To the south, we've got the wastewater treatment plant and a 200-foot setback, which puts a line like, right along, this back corner is exactly 200 feet. So you've got a line like that. Thirdly, you've got the DEC wetland line, which runs along here, which has a 100-foot setback to it. The DOT owns a very wide piece of right-of-way here. We've been asked to, you know, stay clear and stay back of that. So, when, when, when you put those three or four constraints on each side of you, you're basically left with a development area, which is where we've got our buildings set. Now, can, can we move those buildings around, shuffle the parking, push a little this way, pull a little that way? Absolutely. We've done that through several iterations. I'm not saying this can't get better, and I'm just saying that we can incorporate some comments, but we're, we're kind of locked in on all sides.
Okay.
Okay.
I, I do think we normally, especially for a development of this size, we normally want to see, you know, a couple different layouts, and I, and I kind of come back to wanting, liking the, the idea of having what you have in front of the first two buildings, even though it's not a lot of space, you've got some green in between them. And if there was a way to widen, widen something here, especially if you're landbanking some of this parking, maybe turning it into something in the center?
Yeah, we could take a look at that.
I mean-
The one thing, Jeff, I'm sorry, that we did talk about is that even though, and again, I don't, I don't want to design a site for you, but even though there's a 200-foot setback to the sewer plant, you, you can have parking in that area if you want it to, right? There's nothing to prohibit parking in that area.
Right now, it looks like there's a proposed rec field, multi-purpose rec field and picnic area.
Correct, yes.
I'm just saying, I don't know what that looks itself to.
Yes, no, you're correct in what you're saying. So, you know, what Scott's saying is, you know, this, this area in here, we could be parking down in that area. And, and you know, one of the things obviously we're sensitive to is the proximity to the wastewater treatment plant and the screening, you know, I-
And you want to do a leak some buffer again.
Yeah, and, and that field, quite frankly, tonight I was talking to one of my people about that field really wanting to move over into the area that's already cleared and maintain some of these trees in here, which I do think is going to be important to the quality of the development and-
Good. Did you have any layouts where you had a building that sat perpendicular to the rest at the, say, at the end to make it more of a loop as opposed to parallel, two parallel lines or roughly parallel?
Not to my knowledge, no. It does get narrow as you get back here. You know, like I said, the constraints are, the depression or the hole comes back into here, so that's why this building kind of jogs down.
But I think what you said was there was a force main, right?
Yeah, the force main, if you look, I don't know if you can see, I can see this light line that's a path, right? So this, this unit here, as I said earlier, could possibly pivot back to get you that green in the middle of the parking area. I can see that. But turning, actually turning one of the buildings, it would have to almost sit across like this. Which we can take a look at.
I like the idea about pivoting that one building.
Yes. Which you could almost end up with a, like, a circular end, but the three, the three buildings in the back kind of sitting around a circular end where you have grass in the middle and you have-
Yeah, the, 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 the buildings are quite long, so, I mean, you know, it's, you know, you start starting to open this up a bit, but we certainly can look at that as an option. We could look at, one, of opening this up and getting some green through the section. Two, we can look at, you know, putting a row of the townhomes through here. It would be on an angle like that, you know, and this would swing out a little, and then the parking would come up and, and loop a bit or tee.
I think just, yeah, show, show us one or two kind of alternatives. You don't have to draw them to the nth degree, but give us a couple of layouts that you think would work, and let's just take a look.
And as far as the entrance goes, are we sticking with this location for the entrance or, because that, that also plays into the layout?
Scott, what's your opinion on that?
Well, I think it kind of originated in part for convenience to try to utilize the existing entrance. I don't think we're ever married to this particular location, but before we move it across from, or to the other side of the firehouse, I think you need to do an analysis to make sure we're not going to generate a good level of service. Because then it may have to go in this location. But aside from that, I don't think we're opposed to move it.
Yeah, we, we need to get some traffic counts right at the, at the town hall entrance.
And you want to do a court warning like Tuesday?
Yeah, something.
And Brendan, look not just at vehicular traffic, but look at the pedestrian traffic too. See if there's a, you know, if there's a place you would recommend where sidewalks go in addition to entrances and things like that.
It certainly lends itself to the sidewalk.
Absolutely, yeah, but that's what I, that's what I'm saying, maybe going further to the north with the entrance makes sense. And I've, we've probably just not gotten to this point yet, but have you had any conversations or anything like that? And Michelle, I think I'm looking at you because with school district, would this loop road be a town road, or would it be a private road, and would we have kids out on 376? Do we have, do we know what that would look like yet?
I have a conversation with them yet.
Okay. I think we want to understand that because one of the things that I recognize, it may be off-site for you, but we would still want to make sure that wherever the bus stops would be, that there'd be an appropriate shelter and things like that.
And a place to turn around. Not to, not to race forward, but can we get an understanding? I mean, as, you're working on the layouts, what is AKRF? I mean, you alluded to that.
Michelle, walk through it.
How, how, what is the list of what we're going to see on this?
For the, for the EAF?
Yes.
You'll, you'll see everything that they studied previously. You'll see the, the EC NHP letters, traffic study will be done by Brendan and summarized in the EAF. I'll get the information from Brendan.
Michelle, just pull the mic closer to you. We already have a, actually, we already have a letter from York State Office of Parks Recreation and Storm Preservation discussing the potential for artifacts on that site, and they've cleared, they, they've given a letter of no effect for that. I do anticipate that there's probably going to be some restrictions related to the bats, possibly of landings turtle, but Mike Nowicki is currently doing an assessment of the habitat. And also, he did a wetlands assessment, and I believe my understanding is that DEC, which currently has a mapped wetland sort of north of the buildings, and they're going to be taking the floodplain area that's currently not mapped DEC wetland that comes down where Jeff was showing you the wetland line, they're going to, they're going to take that as a DEC wetland. So that's, we're sort of waiting right now. It's been flagged and surveyed, and we need to get that signed by DEC that they're confirming exactly where the, the boundary of the wetland is and that they agree with the boundary.
And, and that's where a lot of the, the wells are now too, right? Isn't that wetland?
I'll defer to Scott on that.
Okay. So, okay, so basically, we're going to get the, the current EIS is the one-
The same thing we would have gotten regardless of who did this stuff.
Right, but I, but there's another one coming. It's not like any of that's going to get recycled.
Um, correct, because I can't, I can't recycle, it was a totally different site. Correct, correct. I mean, I might, I might be, no, I can't, I can't recycle any of it. I was going to say, I may be able to calculate some of the school generation numbers, but I can't even do that because there's more units here.
Okay, right. Okay. And that's, we, we get that on CDs, right? Paperless, for those of us who are registered? So, do we need to delete any of them?
Yes, you need to circulate.
We will, but let's, let's just go through a couple more things as, as we walk through this. So, Michelle, do you have a sense of your timing on when you think we'll have some of this information together? I know it takes time to circulate.
Um, I have, I pretty much have part one complete.
Okay.
I have a few open questions because I'm not only analyzing this development, but I'm also potentially analyzing the, the development of the wellfields. So, some of that information we still need to confirm, but-
So, so with the whole part 142 acre parcel that you're looking at, we know that this 20, I thought it was 22, I think I said 22, for it's 20.7 acres. Is this about wellfields? Is there anything else that's currently proposed that you have to look at?
My understanding is just the, the lines, the, the distribution lines for the, the water in the sewer.
Okay.
And so any disturbance related to that installation of that, and I get, I think potentially a, a water tower at some point might potentially be-
Potentially a water tower and a filter plan.
And a filtration.
Infiltration plan.
Okay. All right. So that'll all be included in the study that you're doing-
Correct.
-as potential foreseeable future development at this site?
Correct.
Okay. Is there anything, and I, I haven't gone back, I should have gone back and pulled it, but is there anything that was in the original, like, typical scope that we would have studied that we haven't covered yet or haven't talked about?
The one thing I, I heard from Jeff today was that you will need an excavation and fill permit, so that, you will need, then you need a special permit for that, which you will grant as part of the site plan.
Visuals, we talked about.
Yeah, visuals, surrendering, right. I think-
Yeah, I think just, just from our opinion, you know, the, the level of analysis that was done last go-around included all the things that Michelle pointed out. The visual, I think the visual analysis here is going to be quite simpler and, you know, yield, I think, acceptable results fairly easily. We were going to just do a couple cross-sections from the front, and I spoke to Michelle about that. And when we, once we get the layout confirmed, we'll do that. But as I said earlier, there is a fair amount of vegetation in front that can and will be maintained, and so visibility to the site is going to be extremely limited.
Okay, and you know, similar to last time, when you have, when you've settled on the look of your buildings, you still need to go to the ARB, and it'll be part of our public hearing process, which you need to be with them.
Yeah, we, we've already submitted the architecture as part of our initial package. It's the same architecture as last time with some minor adjustments for the new, the new building sizes. So, yes.
You know, I, I see the landscaping and, and, you know, I think, forgive me, Scott, but I mean, that, that whole area now that, the brush stuff has been basically just denuded, and it's, is any of that going to be reclaimed or more extensively, like, are you going to plant grass or something like that? I mean, right now, it's just-
Yeah, the part, the part that we control, the, the short answer is yes.
Okay.
We, right now, do not have the limits of the tree line based on current activities. We're surveying that right now, my firm is. And part of what we want to do is establish those limits, identify if there are some key trees we can save, but then also, as you said, this will all be reclaimed with lawn at a minimum. Absolutely. That's important to us.
Okay.
And some of that may be dictated by the DEC permit, because some of that area may be an adjacent area of the DEC well.
But, but, you know, again, we've got some, we'll be, we are planning on going for a DEC wetland permit because we do believe some of our stormwater is going to encroach into the buffer. We will not be in the wetland, we will not be on the steep slope leading down to the wetland, but we'll be up top. And we will include in there, if there are areas that have not been properly topsoil-seeded and mulched, we will include that. That's really an important part of our stormwater obligation as well.
And I understand you guys are not going to use the wells actually that are, you know-
No, they will.
They are?
Those wells are going to be tied in, yes.
Yeah, we're going to tie to the system. The system's going to rely on those wells, so indirectly, yes.
Okay.
So, so you're picking up the town water. Is it an existing water district, or do we have to form one, or what's the?
Uh, they potentially will be an out-of-district user. We're waiting to see how that's going to shake out.
Okay. And are the, the lines are, at worst, they're here, right?
Yeah, the, the line right now ends right behind the firehouse at a hydrant right about there in that, in that island. So we'll be coming through the parking lot. We plan on doing trenchless excavation under 376 and then coming straight up into our property.
Okay, so that's water, and are you going to use the wastewater treatment plant, or are you going to-
Well, eventually, but we're not going straight to it. Unfortunately, believe it or not, the wastewater treatment plant's a little higher than our low end. There is a pump station back here at Trinka Lane, like, back up in this corner.[1715.73] So, what we're going to be doing is we're going to be gravitying from the high point here, we'll be coming back, then we'll be paralleling the wetland to that pump station which sits right down in here. And then, there's a force main, as I said earlier, that comes back to, so it's counterintuitive, but we're going with gravity, is the short answer.
Scott, what is the source of water?
Believe me.
Wait, I'm sorry. Hold on. We're not done with that conversation yet. I'm sorry, we'll come back to that.
Okay, that's why?
So, that's cheaper than building a pump station to just move your waste directly into the plant? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
If you could tap into the force main and just have a booster pump or something like that? I don't know if I'm missing my words.
No, we would permit that, but long-term, it's going to be the cheapest way to do it.
It's probably almost equal on a capital cost standpoint than the O and M. A pump station kills you in the first year, but the fact of the matter is?
Are you going to just try to parallel them, the existing force main coming back?
No, because the force main just does what it does because it can, because it's under pressure. We're going to be gravity, we're going to be straight lines, we're going to be paying attention to topo, it's going to be a little different.
So, you're going to be taking all that back up again and just laying in?
A portion of it. We're going to be having a trench width of disturbance.
In line with the force main?
In the proximity of it. Because the force main does this, and we're going to be doing?
Within that existing easement as much as to the greatest extent possible.
So, can you just, whenever you have something, even if it's a draft, can you just give us a feel for what that's going to look like so we can kind of visualize?
Yeah, it's actually what's submitted to you. In the wastewater treatment plant, we submitted, we put a schematic of that in the back of it.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So, you can take a look at it.
Was that in this set of drawings or is that?
It's, there's three reports submitted, a stormwater report, a wastewater report, and a water supply report.
Okay.
Eric is feverishly going, trying to find that.
And it has a drawing of the proposed location?
It's a schematic of how we see the gravity line coming from the back of the site to the pump station.
Okay.
I didn't want to say that.
All right.
So, there's an easement there to do this already?
There's an existing easement for the force main, and like I said, to the greatest extent possible, we will stay in that easement. But there are some spots we'll have to deviate. Makes no sense to follow.
But it won't affect any future development on that property?
Well, that's what we're going to be, you know, paying attention to. Absolutely.
So, here's that, here's that image or schematic. Again, this is just a schematic of a layout of our buildings. As I told you before, we have a high point back in here. Everything drains back this way. We've already confirmed with Scott, based on the built elevations of the plant, that our sewer line leaving this building here is actually lower than the sewer lines that come into the wastewater treatment plant. So, getting there by gravity is not an option. So, the two options are, we put in a pump station and series of force main, or we do a gravity connection which we've laid out here, and we've already preliminarily studied this, and we believe it's feasible, and we'll be working out the details of that. Again, elevation-wise?
All right, so I'm going to?
And then also, just quickly, any future development could tie into potentially a manhole that'll be constructed as part of this gravity line to facilitate the connection of a future development to the pump station.
So, the lines will be sized to accommodate future development?
Right.
Right, and there's a number of manholes along here, and as Scott said, if somebody were to bring a line in like that and drop into the manhole, it all drains that way.
Okay, so just bear with me, crazy question. The top two buildings, the two closest to 376, you said they're towards the high point?
Correct.
Is there a high point where you could gravity feed directly into the wastewater plant and only pick up the last four buildings or the last three buildings for your gravity?
But what are you trying to?
Yeah, that doesn't, that doesn't save us anything. That probably ends up costing more in infrastructure. I mean, because if you look at it, you know, there's probably a couple hundred feet of main there where you'd have to run main from that point back into here. It, I don't see that, it doesn't save us anything.
Okay.
I mean, we'll convince these guys of that.
For me, I mean, this is just like?
What's that? This helps the future development.
Yeah, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, I'm satisfied with this arrangement, so.
And we'll have to prove it out.
The question I started to ask before was, okay, so there's a water main back on the other side of town hall over here. What's the origin of that water? Where'd that come?
Comes from the Hamlet wellfield over by recreation. And we have a storage tank over by recreation.
Okay.
That's the origin currently.
Okay, again, it's?
But even if these wells were to feed in?
We're going to supplement the existing wellfield with our new wells, yes, in some fashion.
That's where I was going.
Is there a chance then that what Jeff's describing is needing to go under 376 to tap in back here would change if we're doing something with the wellfields here? Or it's definitely going to go across 376?
No, it's definitely going across.
Okay.
And a lot to do, has to do with the chlorine contact time and?
Okay, right, okay, okay. Yeah, say no more.
That won't be a water district?
The only thing they have to analyze is their fire flow protection to make sure that they can get enough fire flow, because they don't plan on sprinkling what the condos or townhomes are not.
So, that's a good question. One of the notes on your plan, it's probably, it may just be the notes, I thought, said three-story building. It's this top note right here.
Yeah, that's, that's not clear. We're two stories with the two buildings, just like before, same basic architectures.
Okay, so all the buildings are two stories or are the townhome units three stories?
No, no, all of them are two, except for the end units on the townhomes, which are one-story.
Draw one, okay. So, so, just make sure you update your charts.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
No, well, it's just, it's a trigger for like fire advisory board and stuff like that. Are you sprinkling these buildings then?
The two multifamily structures, building one and two, will be sprinkling, the townhomes will not.
So, does that mean there's firewalls between each townhome?
There's fire separation walls throughout those, yes.
Okay.
That's all building code.
They fall under the single-family building, daily basis.
Okay, okay. Is it possible to sprinkle them or is it just expensive or why wouldn't you want to do that?
I haven't in the past. If you're requesting to?
I don't know what the water storage or water, you know, what the capacity would need to be for that, I'm just asking if?
Well, we're going to run through those numbers. Jeff's going to run through those numbers, and we'll have to see what it tells us, you know?
Okay. But if we know we're definitely going to do it for the first two buildings, I would assume it would be the same pressure needed for the others, right? Maybe even less because it's?
It may be to your advantage to sprinkler, but depending on what your needed fire flows are, is what we were looking at, I think. You know, we were?
Well, Jeff originally was looking at 750 gallons a minute, I think it's 15, so I mean, he's got to do so.
Yeah, there's, if they're not going to sprinkler, they're going to have certain obligations to provide fire flow at hydrants outside these buildings, which are going to be significant fire flows.
Okay.
If they're going to sprinkle, then they're going to have, to me, fire loads for those built, and so, attached, attached to those obligations are certain minimums. I mean, the buildings are probably, I'm guessing are going to be below thresholds that are going to be above those minimums, but those minimums themselves are significant. Going with a sprinklered building, they're going to be required to evaluate the flow at the base of the standpipe for the sprinklers, which, which may be something the system can better accommodate, more readily accommodate.
Okay.
Jeff, Jeff is, Jeff, we've spoken to Jeff about this, they're going to be evaluating the domestic and fire requirements.
And the results will dictate, I think.
Okay, some more to come on that.
So, you're, what you're saying is, if it makes sense to sprinkler, you're not opposed to it?
I'm not opposed to it, and as it works out, our favorite sub that we work with is our sprinkler man, so I'm sure tonight makes him very happy.
Mr. Carney, while you're up there, I had a question for you regarding traffic and the 22 units that are set aside for abilities first. Those, the tenants of those 22 units would be drivers or non-drivers?
Non-drivers.
Non-drivers, but you would anticipate staff, like a number of staff that would come on a daily basis?
One or two.
One or?
Some people would have?
I'm sorry, we just, we need you to come up to the mic because we queue.
Yeah, sorry.
Sorry about that. Depending on the needs of each individual person, some folks might have staff coming on a daily basis. Some could be one, two, three days a week for a few hours at a time.
But it could be during the course of the day, it wouldn't, doesn't necessarily mean they don't all come at eight o'clock in the morning.
That's right, yes, right.
Two-bedroom units as opposed to the one-bedroom units, so that is for caregiver or roommates or how is that, what is the?
That would be for, for example, two people both getting services decide to live together.
Okay.
So, roommates, kind of situation, yeah.
And, and I'm sorry, how many, how many units do you have? Is it in both building one and building two or?
And or possibly one of the two-bedroom townhomes, just so the two-bedroom townhomes are available as well.
Okay.
Yeah, the 18 of the units for our folks will be one-bedroom and four will be two-bedroom.
The idea is to make the majority of the developments open to the special needs tenants, so that they have an option, if they choose, to live in majority of the buildings.
So, initially 22 units, but you'd be able to potentially expand that if the need arose and if there was ability, is that correct?
I think, you know, the standard is 25% of the overall unit, so we probably would not go higher than that.
Is there a penalty to go higher than that or?
I think our oversight?
Okay, so capacity of abilities first?
Yeah, the folks who provide the leverage funding on our end would want to keep it at 25.
I'm sorry, hold on. Hey, can you just hit your mute for, I'm sorry, Scott, I was having a hard time hearing.
The folks who regulate us would want to keep it at 25%.
Okay.
No, no higher than that. But just to clarify about the question on whether or not the residents would be driving, I would say it'd be very unlikely, although it's possible that some, some may.
So, you'd have 22 units and it would be primarily, primarily in building two or primarily in building one? Or between the two?
Which has the 31 bedrooms?
The 31 bedrooms is building one, it's up on, it's up on top.
We would envision the majority, I would think, because of the number of one-bedrooms.
So, so, building one then will have the, the, sorry, the space that you need for the abilities first?
That's correct.
Folks to have offices and meeting rooms and that sort of thing. And then, building two, which is the southern one, would have the 22 one-bedroom units, two two-bedroom apartments, but would also have all of the rec area?
Well, the community building, inside the community building, we also have our onsite management office, yes.
And the onsite, okay. And you may be moving the rec field over, away from the wastewater treatment plant, but would you leave, would you then also move the picnic area and things like that or would you leave the picnic area into the?
Just for clarification, we did submit floor plans for both of those buildings that show the arrangement of those offices and the rec space, et cetera. Yeah, right now, the rec component is off on this end. With this layout, we've got the picnic area off on the back corner. That would remain. We want the picnic area close to the building in case somebody wants to have a little function with that. Right now, we probably would be moving that field, you know, out into this area here so that we can maintain some of this vegetation in here. That's our, that's our thought, right?
I have a, I have a quick question relative to those 22 units and the recreation facility. Will either of those by any way be additional water generators? The recreation used by, by actual use of the recreation facility will be something where there'll be outside use or anything that would be a generator?
No, the short answer is no. We wouldn't be irrigating that little playfield.
No, I'm sorry, the recreation room that's attached to the?
Oh, yeah, the, you know, our opinion on that, and we've done this on a lot of projects, really the residents are using the rec room. The idea of outside functions, they're few and far between, so, you know, our standard position on that is that the residents who are generating 50, 75 gallons a day per person, whether they're using water in their apartment or in the rec room is not important, but the short answer is no. We have on other projects included a small allocation for outside func, where people might come in for an outside function. Typically, what we've used is about 400 gallons a day. We've got a design flow of 17,000 gallons a day, and we add 400 to it if it's an issue with anybody, but we don't see it that way.
How about the actual, the facilities for the 22 units? Are there any water requirements for some of the, okay, like, it's just this?
Nothing other than water.
Okay, so it's not, none of them will be classified like as an intermediate care facility or anything like that? Okay.
There could also be, and I think we did this on the last project, we did include an allocation for the employees. And again, standard DEC allocations, 15 gallons a day per person, so if we include five people, it's another 75 gallons a day. Again, if we add the 400 to 75, you know, the, we're not changing our numbers, but we have no problem adding those in, and we will.
Any other, any other things we should go over, Brendan, from your perspective?
You folks kind of just in looking at the project, talked about most of the things that we brought up. I mean, as Jeff stated, you know, they prepared this, this presentation for you, knowing that there's a lot of work, a lot of technical details, and they're really just looking for some direction when they're going to jump in with both feet. I mean, as they walk down the path, they're going to start having to think about easements and stormwater maintenance agreements and how they relate with the future potential development of the town property, who's going to own what, who's going to maintain what. And, you know, but these are things that they're all, they're all well aware of, and we developed a preliminary list here, and as Jeff and I spoke, it's, it's more of just a placeholder for us to remember, things to go back to as we get into more detail.
Okay, great, thank you.
I just have, you have one question. At the other site, we brought up the question, I remember the answer, as far as whether they were dedicated parking spaces or just first come, first served. And then, I think for the seniors too, we were also concerned that the seniors, whether they were going to have dedicated parking spaces or first come, first served, so maybe just speak to that. Our management principle, we don't give dedicated spaces. It turns into the Hatfields and the McCoys. So, we, it just? You would think the other? No, no, it gets territorial. But the, especially with the seniors, the, what we found is in front of the senior building, people will acknowledge other people's space or approach to it, especially during the winter time. You know, during the winter time, there's a procedure that the tenants, when the snowplow guy comes, the tenants come out, our super comes out, everybody cleans their car, they clean it up, and then they go back in. And it's worked pretty well that everybody acknowledges or respects everybody else. But? What about visitors? Is there like any kind of set aside for visitors' parking or again, first come, first served? Yeah, and we really don't have an issue. Most of the visitors come, if there are visitors, you know, during, you know, during the day. At our complexes, when we started, you know, 20 some odd years ago, I did the dedicated parking, and it was very problematic. So, and I think here, with the parking schedule and the requirements that the town has, I don't believe we will meet that. We haven't met that really in, I think, all of our, all of our places, so.
All right, so I have a few notes, I'm just going to run them back for you because there's a few kind of takeaways here. So, you're going to look at, we talked about a couple different possible layouts, possibly shifting some of the buildings around or providing more green space between and maybe a different layout with one of the buildings turned a different way. Michelle, you're going to continue forward with the full EAF and all of the different agencies and feedback we need to collect, DEC, schools, Brendan, you'll do traffic, et cetera, cover all of that. You're going to have, you're, you're going to make sure that you're, and I don't know if your application already shows, but you need the excavation and fill permit, you said a wetland permit, and you'll also have the special permit, of course, for the workforce housing. So, I want to make sure your application reflects everything that we'd need to advertise for at the time of public hearing. You'll have renderings used from, call it the loop road, and if you think your project will be visible from 376, we should probably have a sense of what that will look like as well. And then also, the elevations of the buildings themselves, which I think you've already given us, but just make sure we have all of those for each building.
Could we, could we talk about the visual, because we would like to get started on it? What we'd like to start with are just a few cross-sections from Route 376 up through the front of the, of the site into the front buildings, just to show what's going on there. I do think they're going to show that the very limited visibility, and if that satisfies the board's concern, maybe not get into the rendering, maybe do it one step at a time, because we, again, we don't see that that level of effort is going to yield anything beneficial.
Please make those buildings so they don't look like the side of a building and looking from the road?
Well, again, I think what the cross-sections are going to show is that you're not going to get a clear view of the end of the buildings.
Unless you move the entrance road, though. If you move the entrance road, you potentially will get a clear sight up through there.
Yeah, we can, we can take a look at that.
That would be your biggest thing, yeah.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm fine with you starting with a view from 376, because we need to wait for, for Brendan's traffic work to decide exactly where entrances and things like that are going to be, so don't go crazy with those assumptions yet. I think that was Jason, to your point, this, the ends, the end of Building One, it definitely looks like the side of an apartment building, if there's a way to put anything on it to make it look a little more like maybe a, a residence, I think that would be nice, again, depending what your renderings look like. If you show that you have complete tree cover and even during winter time, I mean, now's a great time to probably take a few pictures to see how far into the site you can see and where your buildings would be located. Just give us a feel for that. We talked about, you're going to do some, some calculations to, to identify whether you're going to be providing the fire flow through hydrants or potentially sprinkling the townhouse building, but I get that that's a calculation, you'll just let us know what, what happens with that. We talked about a couple different alternate access points, so depending where Brendan's traffic study ends up in the loop roads, you also talked about potentially from the end of your site looping back down to the wastewater treatment plant, or potentially up into one of the side roads that's in the northern part of the Cannon property now. So just let us know kind of where you're settling in on that. You may move the rec area, we talked about needing, and Brendan, this, I'm looking at you, as I'm saying this, with the traffic study, both vehicular and the pedestrian access, to make sure we can figure out how we can get residents up into the town and back safely, and potentially over to the rec fields and things like that. So I know at some point we've got to be able to figure out how to cross 376. I understand, we don't want to do crosswalks and things like that, but we've got to figure out where that naturally occurs and, and figure out how that would happen. And then you have a few easements you have to work on, you've got the easement for the drainage, I think, and then potentially, it sounded like some of the sewer, if you need to step outside of the existing force main access for the piping you're doing for your gravity line, I think we just need to understand exactly what that's going to look like. And if you're land banking parking, and I'm assuming you are, just make sure you're, make us, be specific with it, so we can kind of understand how many spots there will be, where your land, where you're proposing the land banking and how that's going to lay out. We're in favor of land banking where we can, we don't want sea of asphalt if no one's going to be parking there, but we also don't want you tight on parking either, so townhome units may be more likely to have one or two cars, so just make sure that your parking is sitting where you think you're going to have the most residents that are using vehicles and that sort of thing.
For the alternatives, as I stated earlier, the, the alternative we developed here for this evening does show full compliance parking, all the alternatives we'll do in a similar manner, and then we'll come back and, you know, pick the, the right ones to back out. You know, Ken's made it clear, I think, with the last application, that the idea of two per unit is just way overdone, and we'll get to a happy place, but for the alternatives, we'll continue to look at the full array of parking.
Well, I'm fine with that, you, you need to be able to show you could go to full parking if you had to, but if we have an idea of where you might land bank and what that would look like, it just helps us, even if you just like shade them in a lighter gray or something like that, or hatch them or something, so we know, okay, you, you could put it there, but it's going to be land banked, it just helps us with the, when we look at it. Did I miss anything?
Emergency...
Emergency access, yeah, we talked about either coming off the end, looping back to the wastewater treatment plant, or potentially back up into the northern side of the, the property.
How about getting fire trucks in there? Any issues?
Well, we, we ran some, we ran a truck, a fire truck through, Brendan made a comment that, you know, we didn't look at all the maneuvers, for instance, the idea of a firetruck doing this, right here, I'm not sure that that maneuver works, so there's, there's some tweaking we would have to do to this layout.
You also have more than one firetruck in there too, so, you got to think about that.
All righty, so, you know, what we'd like to do next, really, is just come back with those two layouts, and, you know, we'll prepare them, you know, we'll take a look at the third dimension on them, but basically prepare them just as a two-dimensional layout plan, and the idea is that maybe we tweak this one slightly, and then we do the other two we talked about, and come back to you. The question is, when are your next meetings and what's feasible in terms...
We have two meetings in February, the 3rd and the 17th.